So we should get a little, you know, consideration.
I think it's all, it's been a part of the negotiations.
It's usually beneficial.
Exactly, exactly. I would agree.
I'm not asking for all the marbles.
I would agree. Okay, folks, we're back, we're back in public session. Again, I want to welcome everybody tonight. This is the April 5th meeting of the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen. And we are hosting a meeting tonight in, using the hybrid format. So we'll have folks participating by Zoom as well as people participating here in person. Before we begin with the first item on the agenda for the public session, I'd like to ask everyone to join the board in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item tonight is public comments. Is there anyone seeking recognition? I'm going to recognize the town clerk, Mary Maslowski. Good evening.
Good evening, Mary Maslowski, Town Clerk. I just wanted to call to your attention a couple of items with the elections in the Town Clerk's office. So I'm happy to report the re-presenting has finally been completed through the state's Secretary of State's office. They have finally approved the change of lines and updated our records in our voter registration information system. In addition to that, we are preparing for the May town election. As a part of that, I will need to come before you at your next meeting to start the process to move a precinct location and to set the precinct location for precinct eight. So the Cape and Islands Realtors Building at Mid-Tech Drive is unavailable on May 17th. So we are looking to move that location. We should have additional information before you by next Tuesday. We have gone out and surveyed a number of different sites. At this time, it looks like one of the good possibilities is to move those locations and add them to the senior center. So we're reaching out to the state this week to see if that's a possibility for us. Rather than adding a location, we have looked at open space, open commercial property. We have looked at some other larger locations around town, including Flax Pond. But at this point, I think the, the leading site would be the senior center because of the size of the parking lot, the way it's lit, the number of accessible spaces that are available and the size of the room available. So we'll ask to be on your agenda next week to start that process. If anybody has any questions about that, they can certainly ask me now or call the office. We are happy to discuss. It is just a situation where precincts five and six won't be able to, to vote at Mid-Tech Drive. So we'll use it as an opportunity to try and co-locate where we can. And fortunately, that senior center room, if we set it up a little bit differently and keep it wide open, there's a lot more space that's added to that room to be able to accommodate the flow.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just a quick question, Mary. Today is April 5th.
Yes.
And our next meeting is the 12th.
Yes.
The election's May 17th.
Yes.
That does not give us a lot of time to let people know.
It doesn't. We will, the new precinct locations go out on the town census. Under state law, we will be sending out postcards as well as we'll be doing. The postcards will be an added item. We typically do a robocall to make that announcement. And any of the documentation that we do for, that comes through you folks is doing the vote. We'll put that out on all the social, social media pages. We'll make sure it gets in the newspaper for advertisements. And we're going to try and dedicate one of our extensions so that if people have questions, they can call the office and we'll have somebody that can be available to answer those questions over the next few weeks.
Thanks.
That's great, thank you.
Mary, will be the, any other advertisement besides postcards and website and?
So we can certainly put an, add in the newspaper, make sure that that's available and as a part of the, do a press release.
Right. I just want to make sure people know where they need to go.
Absolutely. And we also plan on having additional staff available at the precinct locations, at the entrances with our pull pads that can readily tell them as they're approaching if they need to be someplace else. So the combination of, of the mailings and the social media posts in our website should be sufficient to get as much information out there as we can. Unfortunately, you know, we need to get the vote done before we can, we can start advertising it, so.
Anybody else on the board? Okay, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Morris.
Vida Morris, I would like to make a couple of comments on the, a couple of articles in the warrant. I really don't understand how we have gotten so far on the town seal situation. And from, considering that that's not something that was brought up that seemed to bother the Native Americans at all. We, we just have a bunch of people who want to virtue signal around to everybody in town. And, and they did absolutely no research, I think, before they got this far. I don't understand. We have to have, do you realize you don't have any idea how much this is going to cost? And neither do the proponents, I guess. And, and, and here, the end of the article as presented says that, "Further, to authorize the town to apply for and accept any grants and/or outside funding which may be available to support this purpose and take any other action relative thereto." Isn't that putting the cart before the horse here? Already we're talking about grants and this, but we have no idea. They have never told us what they, that they did any research and it would cost us X amount of dollars. And considering, if you look around, I mean, every time I look now, there's a town seal all over the place. Just those. Then, then you have the stationary. Then you have apparently the fancy automobiles that some of the people ride around, town employees are riding around and they have the seals. And honestly, it's just everywhere around the corner, I mean. So I, I would suggest, I mean, I'm surprised at the vote that you seem to be very much in, in favor of all of this and proceeding with it. I, I really am. And, and I, I would hope that you can, you know, persuade the people who are organizing this to, to withdraw it indefinitely and come back with some information with regard to how much this is going to cost. And as I said, considering that it wasn't bothering the Native Americans here, I don't, I just don't understand how this whole thing had got as far as it did. And the other one is the Article 29, I guess, the Styrofoam article. I mean, haven't the restaurants suffered enough already during this pandemic? And you, you want, these people proposing that one, you know, just don't seem to care any, at all. They just, oh, it's a good idea to get rid of the Styrofoam here in town, you know. This, of course, is reminiscent of the water bottle situation. And that that one has gotten as far as it has, well, I don't know why you couldn't vote at the last meeting. What, what does it mean exactly when you say from, recommended from the floor? Why were you not able to do that at the last meeting?
That's a common recommendation from the board. And it would mean that we would take action on it at a subsequent meeting. That's all.
Oh, in other words, you, you might take action tonight?
I'm not suggesting we will or we won't. It just leaves the door open so that it could be discussed further later.
Well, I, I hope that you do something about that one too. Because it's, it's, as I said, they, to single out one area, that's primarily what happens, is just the restaurants. And I think they have had enough throughout this pandemic already and, and to have this put on their heads too.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else? I think we, we have a hand raised online on our Zoom. All right, let's go to Mr. Glenn on our Zoom. Can we get Mr. Glenn into the meeting? Joe, can you?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Can, thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Joe Glenn from the Fighting Precinct Six, which it looks like we're going to have to do a little more fighting for precinct six. And I want to address that as best we can because as Selectman Post pointed out, we're getting very close to Election Day. But I did want to offer to you, I know that you have on the agenda the fee notice with the Yarmouth Housing Authority. I'm sure that our executive director, Wendy Olson, will do a fantastic job and you won't need me. But if you would like, you can promote me as a panelist if there are any questions as a vice chair of the Housing Authority. But in regards to the election, you know, I have said for a long time, ever since we went to the Mid-Cape Drive, we lost, we lost a number of people voting in that precinct. It, it has never gone over the amount that we had in previous elections at that location. But I had said since that time that we should look at other locations and be proactive in it. To do it this late, and I know this has nothing to do with the town clerk. It had to do with the census and, and put down a, a number of problems and obstacles for the town clerk to deal with. But it still begs the question of why we hasn't looked at it before. Now we're going to ask the, the people of five and six, and I know that we don't have to, that the precincts don't have to, the voting location doesn't have to be in the precincts. But in most places, if not all places, it is. And now you're going to ask the people of, of five and six and the people of seven now that don't know in, in elections to, to go to a location at the senior center. So it's off the bus routes for people who might go and, and that has been a location. I had often said when we did a CPA fund for the church next, next to the West Yarmouth Library that that might be a good location, but we never looked into it. And, and that's, that's a sad commentary, but we need to look at this stuff. Our voting numbers have gone tremendously down. We have, you know, what, six to eight percent? And that's just not good government. It's not good for our, our town going forward. The, you know, when, when governors and other people, congressmen, look, they say, oh, well, this town doesn't vote. Well, if we make it hard for people to vote, it's, it's a, it makes things difficult all around for, for you as selectmen and for other people to get money and have an impact on, on our govern, on our overall government, state, federal and regional, all of our government. They look to the towns and say, oh, they got good voters here and we're making it hard for our voters. So I think that we should do those message boards, which I've said before. Put them out on 28, put them in high locations, but especially now. Put them out early and often and, and let people be aware. Because we're, we're going to, if we were at eight percent last year and we're not going to have any early voting, we're not going to have any mail-in voting. There's obviously still absentee ballot voting, but there's not going to be any mail-in voting. All of these things are going to get us down to four percent and that's not good for the town. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Have a great meeting and I am available. I'll stay on Zoom.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak during public comments? See anybody else on, on the Zoom channel? Okay, so let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a request from the Yarmouth Housing Authority for a fee waiver. And I'm going to ask the representatives from the Housing Authority to step forward.
Good evening. I'm Wendy Olson, the executive director of the Housing Authority. And I think you have a letter there that pretty much expresses we're subsidized by the state to keep our operations running there. So I respectfully ask for a waiver of the $80 a unit fee to register our units.
Okay. Let me do, let me do this if that's the essence of your presentation. Is there anything else you want? I mean, the floor is yours. Don't feel like you're pressured for time. Feel free to lay out for us.
Pretty much, our average rent from our tenants is about $350 a month and it includes all utilities, heat, hot water, electricity. That said, our budget for electricity alone is $66,000 a year for utilities. The state subsidizes us $1,000 a month to keep our operations going. It's an older complex, so we have a lot of maintenance and upkeep to do. Taking that $3,200 away from our budget, which would be better spent helping our residents improve their units.
Okay. Do, do any members of the board have any questions regarding the request before the board? Actually, before, before I do that, let me ask, we have, I've asked the town administrator to solicit feedback. And this is, this is normal is that when we get a proposal for a fee waiver or some other, other requests typically like this, we ask the department heads to weigh in and provide us comments or recommendations. I think we just received something from the, the health agent. Some of the board members may not have read this. Bruce, do you want to come to the mic and maybe speak to your recommendations?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair and Selectman. Our recommendation is the fee should be paid. That would go back into our housing rental program. They have 40 units as, as Wendy mentioned over there. At times, we do need to go to a complaint. They also have the property up on Station Ave, which is five units, and we go there if needed. That, she made a note, it's a group home, so building and fire also go there. So it's just money that we look at as a rental program that should be considered as part of a, of ongoing cost for us.
Okay, that's helpful. Are there any other department heads, any other officials of the town that want to comment on this proposal? Okay, let me go to the board now. Selectman Horgan, do you have any comments, questions, thoughts?
I do. You mentioned that you have $66,000 in utilities. What is your annual budget?
About $246,000.
You mentioned the expense of renovating. Do you have any idea how much yearly you spend for that?
Including our maintenance man, it's about $84,000 between salary and our contract costs such as trash removal, extermination, alarm systems, extraordinary maintenance and things like that. We get separate funding for capital improvements, which isn't included in this budget. It's a separate pot of money.
Okay. The memo that we got from the Director of Health mentions that this process has never actually been followed before. Are you aware of the history of whether or not the Select Board has been asked to waive these fees in the past?
We have always asked for this and it has been granted in the past.
Okay.
I liken it to us not having to pay excise tax on our vehicles because it's taking taxpayer money from one pot to give to another taxpayer-funded pot. The town doesn't pay excise tax on their vehicles. We don't pay it on ours because you'd be budgeting against taxpayer money to pay a tax bill, more or less. It's the only way I can.
The only other, not question, but comment would be, I would love for you to come in at some point and just, let's talk about expansion of senior housing town. We've really not had an occasion to talk with your group and we don't know, you know, whether there's plans that are being contemplated, whether they've been prepared in the past. I mean, I'm fairly new to the board, so forgive me if there's been work done. But I, I just would love to see us do more for our seniors and I'd love to have that conversation with you and your committee.
Sure, I can, I have a board meeting next week and I can ask them if they'd like to set up a time.
Great. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Selectman Stone, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm trying to get a little bit of understanding as to what your bottom line is. You, you made a statement to the effect that this, these fees could be better used for, you know, housing purposes in a general sense. But if you had to pay these fees, where would it leave you in terms of your bottom line? Would, would you still have funds left over or would you be tapped out?
No, we run a negative balance, so the state subsidizes us. This year, we'll get about $50,000 to make it through our year. So it would take out from something we've already budgeted for.
And, and you're saying that you got waivers in, in the past?
Yes.
For how long?
Yeah.
Or, or let me rephrase it another way. Have you ever paid the fees?
No. Most towns in the state do not.
Can you, do you, can you tell me what the basis of, of, of your knowledge is? That other towns, most towns do not. Have you inquired in terms of local, the local communities?
I only know of one other town that doesn't get the waiver that I'm aware of. Most give it as a courtesy. We're providing a service to the residents of the town to keep safe, affordable housing. Again, we include all utilities, so we're budgeting. This year, the budget could go way over with the increase in utility costs.
I could imagine that is a likely scenario based on what's going on with energy. What, what town does not get the waiver to your knowledge?
Wareham.
Are you aware of any towns on the Cape that do not get the waiver?
No.
That's all, Mr. Joe.
That's it. Okay, Selectman Post.
I'm not sure if we call it a waiver or just not, not apply. I don't think I've ever remembered in my time sitting here that we've had a waiver. Have you applied for a waiver or have you just don't apply to have the inspections?
I, I applied for both. The last time I had it in writing, it was through a consent.
On the consent agenda?
Consent agenda. And I came to that meeting.
What year was that?
2017 or early, yeah, the meeting was in 2017. And we got the consent agenda passed and emailed to us in January, I think, of that year. And then from there on in, I've just mailed and I came to the meeting and I wasn't asked any questions. So I, and you had all discussed it amongst yourselves at the time. And since then, I've just mailed in the requests. It was granted for a year, is my understanding.
Bruce, how many man-hours does it take for you to do inspection of 45 units?
Well, right now, excuse me, they have their own inspectors, I think, that go through on a regular basis. So we only have to go if we respond to a complaint over there. And it's usually only one or two complaints a year that we have to put man-hours in. The question is if we have to issue a certificate, then that takes time to process a certificate.
So we don't issue certificates right now?
Right, right now, we do not, because we do not go and inspect them. We would probably do a baseline. Sometimes we meet their inspector out there or at different jobs.
When you say their inspector, you're talking about a state inspector?
They have a, a state housing authority inspector, correct?
So?
But we do go up to the one on Station Ave and that's usually a team inspection of building and fire department to go through that five-unit complex.
I've brought the registration forms here twice, but they don't want to take them without the payment, so.
Okay. Well, so have we, we, but we, even though we do no inspection, we still require them to have. Like, can you just walk through the process with me of what there's, what there's, what's supposed to happen?
Their rental properties, as other rental properties in town, whether that's Yarmouth Commons, Yarmouth Gardens, Simpkins, you know, it's a rental prop, property, so we just say, okay, rental, here's your annual application.
But in most rental properties, we actually do an inspection.
Correct.
So they're not really getting a value for their, for their money in this particular case. I, I don't mean it in a derogatory way to you. I'm talking about in terms of utilizing tax dollars. Typically, you know, we've changed our policy a little bit since 2017 because we were waiving a lot of fees at the time and it was really being burdensome to our departments and our, and our town budget overall. But in this case, I mean, it's not, you're not spending a whole, whole lot of man-hours.
Correct. We're not spending a lot of man-hours unless we're going on complaints.
That's all.
Selectman Smith.
The $3,600, what that's, what is that going to do for you?
It goes into the general over account for rental properties income. Helps it towards, you know, the meeting, our requirement of money coming in to run the department. It would assist. How much does that actually go? It depends how much money comes in each year. It fluctuates. It would, it would definitely help.
I'm, I'm wondering about Wendy's comment about it's, it's, it's an excise tax, one pocket to the other pocket. Do you have any thoughts on that, Mr. Murphy?
It would be good to go in our pocket.
If I could help.
Why am I not surprised by that answer?
That, that question, and, and I think.
I don't mean to be quick on that.
The, the critical point that, that he raises, and we've had this discussion very recently in establishing that inspector position. The, it is differentiated from a tax. It's a fee-based system that we have the revenues tracked to pay for the housing inspection program. And these are a part of the count of those units that are required to make this service break even. And the Housing Authority doesn't pay taxes. We, we waive their, their taxes. So all of the things about the excise tax and they don't pay property taxes. So no taxes are charged. But I, I think it's important to keep in mind that these fees are calculated specifically to cover the cost of, of operating the inspections. And if there are particular units that don't require an inspection, I, I would recommend those for a waiver. I think it would be appropriate because if they're not inspected, they're not having that full cost. But if there are units in here that do have an annual inspection, that, that takes time. And I don't know if, I mean, the, the fee covers it across the, the town's number of units. So it would just be something that all of the other rental units would have to make up the fees for. So if there are actual inspections being done, I think that, that the fee should apply, but not, not for the ones that they don't inspect.
Mr. Stone.
Right. I am prepared to make a motion.
Okay, could you, could you just hold that for the moment? Because I, I haven't asked any questions. Was there anything further that you wanted to add, Bob?
No.
So let me make sure I understand something. The state has its, the Housing Authority has access to its own inspectors.
Correct.
Those inspectors go out and inspect the units, correct? Do they actually do an inspection on the units to certify that they meet certain code requirements?
We do an annual inspection on the units and then the state comes down and does another sampling of the units that we've inspected.
Do we know if those units, when they're inspected, if they meet also the requirements that the town reviews or the standards the town reviews? Do, you, you're doing that?
My man and my administrator are both certified through DHCD in facility management and. and inspections.
So, the concern that one may exist as to whether or not these units are properly inspected and safe for the residents, that issue's really been addressed, because you folks are coming down, you have the appropriate officials coming down to do that. So the question is whether or not you could also get paperwork from the town, also certifying that those standards are made. I guess the question I have is, if they're already getting inspected, they're already getting certified by state officials, what's wrong with just utilizing those certifications? They, they're doing all the work, they're spending all the time and energy, it's costing them really significant amount of time to do it, why don't we just accept those certifications as a municipality? And then, you know, there's probably a nominal fee for doing the paperwork, but why don't we just essentially accept what they've done so that we're covered and, and accept that? There should be some, maybe we could work out a reciprocal arrangement where we can issue them a certificate based on them certifying to us, to our satisfaction, that those units meet the requirements of the town. So there may be a way just to simply exchange paper so that they're properly certified and covered. I think...
Yes.
The general concern about making sure that we have the revenues to cover the expenses of the department and the inspector, I think, are well-founded and they make a great deal of sense. But what we're finding out is that there's another way to get the work done without using our own staff. And my feeling is, is why not accept their work, their inspections, and make sure that they're properly certified from the town, based on the inspectors that they have doing the work? I just don't see why we want to charge them what we would normally charge somebody else if we're not involved in doing that work, it, it doesn't make sense to me.
We, we would need to get copy of their individual inspection reports. I think they match up pretty close to the state housing code. I know there's a few things they don't match up on, but I think in general, they match up pretty close.
Do you want to give us one of your inspection code?
Okay.
It's not 100%, but it's pretty close.
Hold, hold that thought for just a moment, I'd like to at least come back to the board. I know Selakman Stone wanted to offer a proposal, did you have...
Can I just get a quick question before the motion?
Okay, by all means.
Bruce, when you've gone in for complaints, have you ever come across something that would have been violation of our particular codes and inspections?
Um, yes, sometimes, and sometimes the complaints are tenant-generated, it might have been a tenant, something they have to keep up. I think one time we had to work with a hoarder up there at one time, and that was difficult, that took several visits and that, that was not easy. But usually we can work together on that complex if we need to go up on a complaint.
Thank you.
Selakman Stone, did you want to offer a proposal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I feel I've been asked to let everyone know which of my children I love the most. And while I can't decide the issue on that basis, I, I can look and see which one is most in need. And I think that the discussion has indicated that the housing authority is in need of these funds. I, I think the health department could use them, would love to have them certainly, but when they're operating at deficits in their budget and with all the spike in utility costs that are going to probably be budget busters this fiscal year, I don't think, frankly, they could, can afford to, to make these payments. And in addition, I think that your very excellent suggestion, Mr. Chairman, there can, should be a way where they could work out some reciprocity with these inspections and get the state inspectors to carry the bulk of the work and satisfy the, the, the safety criteria. So I'm making a motion, based on those considerations, that the fee waivers be granted as requested.
For all 45 units or just the 40 units?
For all of them.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Selakman Smith.
Wendy, you said, you said that you inspect 100% of the units. You said the state inspects only a few number of the units?
Correct.
How many, roughly how many do they inspect?
About five.
Five out of 40 or five out of 130?
Five, five out of 40.
So, so I, my question is, what's the other 90 units? It, it, it says the housing authority works with 130-plus units. I'm sorry, the health department, excuse me, I misread that. It's not, not Wendy.
Yes, that, that's correct, we work with them separately besides the housing authority on Winslow Gray.
Okay.
There's approximately 130 housing authority units in the town that we work with the owner on, that they also receive working with Wendy on, so it's about 130 that we work with them separately on.
Mr. Murphy, since Wendy's certified to do the inspections, are you able to accept her inspections even though the state is only doing a small percentage?
Well, that, that was our question, if they're only doing five, Wendy goes through...
You just have a form that I think you follow up on?
Correct.
It's not a state-certified form. We've asked if the state could do more than five, if they, if they ever said that they'd do more than five.
I can ask them when they come out.
My, my issue is, is health and safety. I, I want to make, I want to make sure that things are fine, and not in defense that you guys are not doing enough, but, you know, I, I think, you know, if, if you're not meeting the town's requirements in terms of, you know, our bylaws, I, I don't think you're meeting all the, all the health and safety requirements that, that, that the board in the town deems necessary.
Can I ask a question about the other five units?
Sure.
When you say the state inspects the 40 units, do they inspect all 45 units?
No, well...
Right, so the town inspects the five, the multi-family house, correct?
Town, the fire department, and I think the building department all go over to the group home.
Okay, so I'd be in favor of the 40 units, but the five units that we have, you know, significant, I would say, services at, I think that we should leave those on the table. And I think we need to find a way to certify that they are all, to some extent, not, not to some extent, to, to our extent, safe. So, I don't know what paperwork you can provide to give that comfort to Bruce, but it, it's, it's a, it's a must.
Every inspection we do creates work orders if there are issues, so he can even see the work orders that were generated and completed upon all...
Is that from your inspection or from the state?
From our inspection, and then the state gives us a list if they find any deficiencies in the unit.
Can you just work together to make sure that Bruce has a comfort level and can see your paperwork and, you know, you stay in, in communication? And, you know, he may fi, I think you, you may find you probably have to go out and probably look at some of them, but I think based on the financial analysis that has been put forward and, and the fact that they do those inspections there, I'd be comfortable with that. But I, I think that our team needs to continue to make sure we, we do the group home.
Do you, do you understand, Wendy, what we're trying to?
Yes.
We want to make sure...
Services are involved, your fire department, your...
Correct, we want to make sure that the units are safe. Typically, what we do as a town is inspect units that are used for rental purposes. There's a team that's available, but we have staff to go out to inspect to make sure that they're safe and they're fine for, for rental purposes. If you can provide the Board of Health with the certification that the units under your control are safe and meet the requirements to the satisfaction of the Board of Health, then from my point of view, that should be sufficient. Now, I would like to see more state inspections and maybe, I, I don't want to be overly critical of the inspections that you do, but I think it would be helpful if there was a more rigorous process. But again, I would leave that up to both the Board of Health and the Housing Authority to work out.
Mike, would you consider amending your motion to leave the five on the table?
I certainly would. I, I am going to make that motion, I am going to amend my motion to...
Waive 40?
Waive the fee for the 40.
Second that, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, it's been revised, I hope someone's taking very good notes on the motion and the revisions. Any other board members have any comments, discussion? So do we want, do you want to repeat your full motion again for the board and for the, and Mr. Rittenhour, who's, is quickly writing notes?
To waive the, the fee for the 40 units located at 534 Winslow Gray Road and not to waive the Station Avenue five units.
Correct.
Do we need to put anything in there about paperwork that we need to receive in order to...
I think for me, Mike, and, and, and again, let's make sure that this is clear, I'm expecting that, the assurance here is that you can provide our Board of Health with the certification that those meet code and our requirements, that's what I'm hearing tonight.
Can you do that?
Okay.
So, so add to that subject to the housing authority providing certification that the 40 units at 534 Winslow Gray Road meet the Board of Health requirements.
That's, that's what I, that's what we're hearing tonight, I want to just make sure that the proponent of the motion is comfortable with that assumption baked into the motion.
That's fine with me.
Okay. All right, we've had the motion, the discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, not to jump ahead, is this something that we'd want to do each year to get, get an update on?
My hope is that you two can work this out and come up with sufficient paperwork. We want to make sure that all, all rental units are adequately protected and meet the town standards.
We can do that.
And you could work with their inspectors, and if we can do that together, that would be great.
Yeah, we can do.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda, I'm going to request the board's indulgence. I know we were all just dying to get a diff presentation, but we are going to suspend that for the purpose of today's meeting, and we're going to go directly to the review of the annual town meeting warrant. Our town administrator has invited a number of department heads who obviously are very interested in the warrant, have articles on the warrant, so we're going to turn this portion of the meeting over to Mr. Rittenhour, and he can sort of lead us in a discussion of the warrant articles and, and he can, I will let him call to the podium or call to the table, department heads and other town individuals or officials who may have something to offer or speak.
That's coming, give us a second, our projector's warming up, and Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, and the first thing I want to do is to join you in welcoming our department heads and division heads who have joined the, the forum to, you know, get some more information out to the public on our upcoming town meeting. It's getting more and more difficult, I know we've had team meetings on various outreach efforts on, on how we're going to get the word out on time, town meeting without having the, you know, the press and the newspapers, you know, as active as they've been, it's, it's more and more difficult. And I thought it was particularly appropriate to have the, the departments here with us this evening. I know the board has had several meetings, I mean, we've had hour after hour of review of the warrant articles, review of the, the various budgets, the finance committee has met for, for months, and, you know, this poor group of people that started the process really with, with all of their hard work, I, I thought it would be great to, to bring them in at the point where we're preparing, the recommendations are in place, we're preparing to present these articles in front of the, the voters at town meeting, and we thought it would be great if, on some of the particular articles that were, you know, the work of these department heads, that we could recognize them for those efforts and to get some of the additional information and background. So what we thought we'd do, and it's not a, a scientific presentation, but I, I do want to cite Bill Scott again, I mean, he's just such a powerhouse in terms of organizing all of the various information and, and putting together, he's going to be coordinating, I, I thought we really struck a, a solid vein of value at our last town meeting with the presentations that had all of the information there. So we'll follow along with Bill's presentation and with your indulgence, we'll go through each of the articles and I'll request some folks to provide a little information. And it, and it starts with Article One, are some budget adjustments that we need in some of the typical articles that we have fallen behind on, and for that, maybe Robie and Jeff, maybe just a word on how the construction demolition amount, we've had much more volume than we thought, but there's also fees associated that which return to the general fund.
You're absolutely right.
Can I ask you both just to come to the front table so that we can get you both on the camera? That would be great. No, we want to get both of you on camera.
Cover the town report.
That would be great. Yeah, I think, you know, the last time we talked about this, we really went through things relatively quickly, and I think one of the questions that came up that, from board members, that I think is worth at least exploring a little bit, is just the situation involving solid waste disposal, the market conditions, it seems that in every community the cost for disposal has been going up, but it sounds like that's going to be an issue, that could very well be an issue well into the future as well, and, and before you get, we go into, into this particular aspect of it, I think it would be helpful to get a little bit more background in terms of just the overall marketplace and how it's looking right now, particularly into the future, because I, I've heard from other DPW directors that solid waste is going to continue to be a costly item for municipalities on Cape Cod, it's going to continue to force us to look for creative ways to find ways to manage costs. Other communities are looking at composting, they're looking at a whole range of other ways to manage their waste streams, so if, if, I think it would be helpful, at least for this board member, to get some background in terms of just to put this in context for us, what, what's, what's happening in the marketplace and what can we anticipate in the future?
Well, I can start by saying it's, you know, for this first item here with construction and demolition, it's really two parts. It's the cost of disposal, and that applies to municipal solid waste trash as well, and that's going up, and Robie has some numbers I'm sure she can share with you about the Covanta cost going up year over year, and it's actually going up more this year because of the cost of living. But it's also the volume, with construction demolition, the volume in my tenure here is doubled, we're up to about 18,000 tons a year, where we were almost half of that just six, seven years ago. And so that's a driver of the cost, probably more than the, the cost of the disposal itself is just the volume. And so when we're talking about a budget adjustment, that's because our expenses have gone up. Now, we were here just last meeting to talk about the fees associated with that, so the, that's the bad news, the good news is that we have fees to cover the cost of that construction demolition material. But do you want to give some specifics on the cost?
Sure, I'm happy to, I'm not sure if this is on, I'm happy to talk about that, Mr. Chair, I think that some of the things that you're talking about on an overall, not only Cape Cod, but a Massachusetts issues, the landfills are closing. The landfills throughout Massachusetts are closing, Bourne is one of the last landfills available, and as far, that's for municipal solid waste. As far as construction and demolition, the, the requirements are that here in Massachusetts are getting more and more stringent on where and how things can be disposed of, and the regulations for the vendors who are handling the construction and demolition are getting more strict. So their processing fees are going up, their transportation fees for where they have to haul the material is getting more and more expensive because they're having to go further and further away. So, and also we're looking at gas prices as well, so we're talking about heating oil while our gasoline prices are going up, and a lot of the transportation costs are associated with the, the high price of gasoline and labor. So Jeff is absolutely correct, the largest portion of the, the increases has to do with the doubling of material that's coming into the facility. Nothing's really changed as far as our staffing is concerned, nothing has changed about our processing, it has to do with the volume that's coming in. But you're right, our municipal solid waste is also going up. We were seeing a 2% increase annually on the percentage, or the out, out, excuse me, on the tonnage that we're charged from Covanta. This year, we're seeing a 4% increase in, in our prices, and that has to do with the overall price index throughout our government. So we're seeing, you know, substantial increases in the price per ton. So, and again, municipal solid waste is also going up, our, our, our volumes... So, and again, municipal solid waste is also going up. Our volumes of people who are here seems to be increasing, not just in the summertime, but on our annual year-round basis. So our volumes are going up for the municipal solid waste as well as the C and D.
And are you making the point, I don't want to be putting words in your mouth, but are you making the point that this is a trend that you see continuing?
Yes, it is, and I think you're absolutely right when you're also talking about trying to find ways to redirect the waste when you referenced glass and food waste. We're doing a lot more of that. We're trying to find those solutions to divert the waste so that it's not going into the solid waste, especially if there's revenues that can be recouped. For example, we separated the processing of newspapers from mixed paper. Mixed paper only comes back with a rebate of $60 a ton, whereas newspaper has a higher value. So by separating those, trying to bring more money into that account that is used to process requests for capital budget items.
Okay. So it means that we should probably be putting that food digester project that Mr. Centio keeps talking about. We should probably be elevating the priority of that project, just given what we're dealing with here.
That will certainly help with costs, yes.
And I don't want to monopolize the conversation, and I interrupted you. I mean, you were actually making a presentation, so let me allow you to.
That's Article One. There's a lot of articles. We didn't want to, 20 minutes in Article, but.
No, I understand, but what happens is that I think if you probe into one of these questions, it tends to open up the doors to other other comments, other observations, and like I said, the digester project, we've been talking about it for a while, but obviously there's a greater sense of urgency, I think, behind it. Do any other board members have questions for either Jeff or?
Quick one?
Yes.
Every time we look at the warrant, the C and D number is changing. Can you explain that?
Well, just the volume is uncertain, so this goes through the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th, so right now, we still have the better part of three months in which the volumes are uncertain. If the construction market continues to, you know, boom and the volumes are increasing, that number is going to be real difficult to get a handle on, so what we do is we look at the trend from the previous year and carry that forward to, well, what did June last year bring in for volumes and predict that as being the volume? We did that for April and May and March as well, but March was ahead of where we had expected it to be, so that's why there's a little bit of a change. We try to be conservative of these numbers. Hopefully you won't see that change again, but we still have nearly a quarter of the year to go with uncertain volumes.
The fee increase, when will that take place?
April 1st. It took place on April 1st.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Before you go, one last question. Sludge. Do we normally consider wastewater sludge a solid waste?
It is a form of solid waste, but a lot of times we refer to it as sludge just not to get it confused with municipal solid waste, which is trash, so it's just terminology.
Looking ahead, are we anticipating that sludge would be handled through the, our waste division, or is that going to be handled separately?
If it's wastewater sludge, that would be through our water and wastewater.
That'll be part of that overall program, so we're seeing a light item for sludge disposal, sludge management as we develop the operational budget for that project.
Yes, absolutely. Thanks.
I have one question, just in the writing of the article, and maybe it's always this way, but based on the fact that it's a free cash account, and it's a projected number, do we not put in the context of the article of appropriated sum of money up to? They get the 450 regardless? Is that how? How does that work?
You have to make a motion. You're not allowed to do an article that says up to. It would just be, we put in there a sum of money, and then when you get to town meeting, you make a motion for the amount.
So you're going to amend this from the floor?
I'm going to have to make the motion for the number, yes.
Okay.
So that'll be a written, hopefully it'll be delivered in all likelihood by a member of the selectmen. Usually we have your motions all out.
Just making sure. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So after we get through Article One, we're set to finish the remainder of the fiscal year in one piece. We move into Article Two, which is the general government portion of the municipal budget, and all of the key departments have come in here with level-funded budgets that the total increase in Article Two's portion of the budget is about 4.3%. Overall, townwide spending is up about 6.5%, and I want to acknowledge our Finance Director Ed Centio, who has been my guiding light on the analysis of the revenues throughout the budget process, and Ed, I don't want to put you on the spot back there, but I want to give you an opportunity to indicate any feelings that you might have on the revenues that are proposed for Article Two and the budget. I know we've been through a lot of that discussion, and so far, things look like we're in pretty good shape to sustain the projected budget for the next fiscal year.
Yes, I believe so, and at your direction. We're still fairly conservative. Ed Centio, Finance Director, Tony Yarmus. The sludge is also going to go into the anaerobic digester as well.
Very good.
As well as the food waste, just to add that.
Nice footnote there, Ed. That's very good. Thank you.
We have a war. We don't know if that's going to spill over the borders of Ukraine. We have another variant. There are still reasons to be very conservative, but I think our numbers are coming in so far fairly robust. We should be.
Don't use that word.
Oh, that's somebody else's word. We just got the hotel motel numbers. The hotels who had been suffering during COVID are bouncing back very strong, and the short-term rental numbers going to wastewater also look very strong as well. So, and I want to point out the percentage increase. It seems fairly large, but remember, we're putting back into the levy the roadway funding, so some of the things that were cut previously and dealt with in different ways are now back into the budget, and that's adding to the percentage increase.
Thank you.
I do want to ask specifically, I'm not sure it's in this budget, but it might be, because I was thinking, and Bruce is here. Who's still here? Okay. Well, I was curious about our human service grants. I don't know if they got into the Board of Health Department's budget. They used to be paid through free cash. I don't see them this year, so I'm a little concerned about that.
The human service budget, and follow on Ed's comments, that is a specific example of an item that was previously removed from the budget, but we restored that to within the levy budget this year, and the amount that it's funded at is 60,000, which was the previous amount that was in the budget. It's not the highest it's ever been, but it's a solid amount that we had carried.
And that's within?
It's in the Board of Health budget located on page nine.
Many years out of free cash, and I didn't see on the free cash list, so I'm much happier having it as a consistent.
For a number of years, it was within the Health Department budget away from free cash. It was just in order to be, again, very conservative. We took it out for a period of time, but now we're restoring things.
So I think for the public, perhaps you could go over some of the budget busters, the health insurance percentage, because I think that that 6% sounds high, but I think it's important for people to know what our health insurance and our projected utilities and how you manage that.
And just, again, remember, you know, going from 0 to 1.1 million dollars, that's a huge number. Health insurance, I think, is at 3% is what we budgeted because of what the Cape Cod Municipal Healthcare gave us as a percentage, and, you know, again, we're trying to be fairly tight in our expense budgeting, a little bit more tight than S and P really likes us to be. They'd like us to spin off or have more cushion in our expense budgets, but we have been fairly tight historically in terms of our expense budget, so that that number has not been escalated beyond what we're being told that number should be. And, you know, things like the energy, 10%, again, energy prices are increasing even more dramatically than we thought initially when we did the budget.
Doesn't seem like we ever catch up. We do so much solar, and we've become a green communities. We do all, we take all these steps to reduce our number, and yet it goes up by double digits every year, even still in spite of that.
Just remember, we just put in a large DPW building that uses quite a bit of energy, so we're doing other things, but, you know, the numbers of kilowatt hours are going down in many cases, but the cost for a kilowatt hour is increasing, so those are some of the competing, and then obviously the fuel prices, as you know, at the pump, we get it at a little bit better price than you all do, but those prices are going up as well. So the energy is both the electricity as well as the fuel, and, you know, again, we're looking at, you know, potentially hybrid vehicles, trying to do a lot of things to try to maintain that number a little bit lower.
We also took a 13 and change percent increase in the pension system, and that's just another one of those overhead items. So that's almost $5 million now, just for retirement.
And property casualty insurance is about 10% as well, which has, you know, the workers' comp component as well as the liability and property casualty.
That's great. While we have that, is there anybody on the board that would like to ask him a question? Or make a comment?
And we hope to have some news soon about the anaerobic digester.
Yes.
That would be great.
That's great. I just want to thank Ed. I'm sorry. I just want to thank you. I don't know if I'll be here in the future, so I don't know if I get the opportunity, but you have really thought out of the box, and we've made so much progress financially since your term here, and I just thank you for all that you do.
There's a lot of team members behind me that have all participated. I think if you talk to the state and a lot of other people, I think they'll rave about the folks that are in the finance department.
But busy as you are, you still come forward to us with things like the anaerobic digester, which I'm sure takes up a lot of your time, and it was an idea to get us to save money. And things like that are, really, you're out of the box thinking that. Help everybody, so I'm very appreciative of you.
Thank you very much.
Amen.
Thanks, Ed. I'm hope you're glad you came. After all of his work, he doesn't get a lot of accolades, but Ed certainly deserves it.
You did need a lot of help.
We get a good team budding here.
I can see that.
So we get through the annual town budget for the general fund, and as you can see, most of the items are straightforward, all of the the overhead items. Then we move into their separate articles for each of the enterprise and special revenue budgets, so we can keep direct track of those. Now, I don't think Scott was able to make it, but we did discuss the golf budget a little bit at the last meeting, and Bill, do you feel comfortable just giving a couple of the highlights? I know the costs are up as a result of both play and inflation.
If the board recalls, at the last meeting, we talked about how we left 135,000 in this budget. Additionally, we have it in capital as a buffer because we saw those inflationary costs going up. Second issue, I think, that was discussed was the relationship to the number of members and the revenue. The membership revenue is dependent upon what type of membership people have, so it's not a direct multiplication. And I know Scott was trying to be conservative on his revenue side to make sure that he didn't anticipate too much, so then the event that the revenues went down, there is a peak associated with this, if the board recalls, related to the pandemic, so we're trying to stay away from predicting that that's going to continue and be a lot more conservative in the future years. So the other items in this that we've talked about, we've talked about within the context of fees and the inflationary pressure associated with war, with chemical supplies and things like that. We'll pick that up at the next board meeting. We have some more information in terms of comparisons of other courses for that, but we believe that this is a conservative budget, and then the fees that we're requesting will also assist in the new pressures associated with the Ukrainian situation.
I think one of the questions that will come up at town meeting will be, can you explain costs appropriated in the general fund? That line item in the budget kind of just jumps out at people, and I think for those that might be watching and planning on going to town meeting, if you could just help address that, that would be helpful.
I believe those are the payback to the general fund from prior subsidies to golf, but we'll have an explanation for that.
I'm going to call on Mr. Centio, who's nodding his head. Ed, do you want to comment? Okay.
Is this worn printed? Was there guidance in terms of the wording? I agree with Mark, and I think we brought it up last week. This is going to be very confusing. Is there a way that we can amend the wording in here or further explain it?
You can, but there's a process, as you all know, setting the tax rate, and on the state's tax recap form, this is the abbreviated wording for taking money from an enterprise fund and paying it back to the general fund.
Maybe in the explanation.
Yeah, I think it's worth, I think Tracy's making a good point. I think it would be great to add some additional explanation there to define what that is, because people will be looking at that, and they'll look at it. They'll be staring at it for quite a while, so.
We were last week.
Exactly, so I think adding more explanation to that would make a great deal of sense.
You would have seen this for years, coming out of the septic facility, as well as the Water Department. So this is wording that has been around for, you know, decades, but I would think that we can put something in the explanation. But this is not any overhead charges. The Golf Department is the only enterprise fund that doesn't get allocated any overhead charges.
No, we know. We know there's a very simple explanation. I think it would help a lot to have it included in that language.
We could probably add a slide of FAQs, and then the event that a question comes up, we'll have it right up there.
Selectman Post is suggesting stick it in the explanation. I think her suggestion makes sense and should be.
I mean, we could do that, but.
It's too late for that. Yes.
Well, you better have your slide ready.
All right.
But we can come up with a thunder slide.
There you go. Thank you, Ed.
It's a hidden slide.
It's Municipal Finance 101, yeah. The thunder slide.
So then, from the golf, we move into our other special revenue fund, the Water Division Budget. I don't know, Roy, if you wanted to just make a couple of words on behalf of the Water Department Budget. There's not a lot of increases there, I know.
All right. Hi, I'm Laura Zola, Water and Waste Water Superintendent. Yeah, there's not too much to say about the water budget. It's pretty much level funded except for wages, so that has just the contractual obligation increase. Otherwise, our expenses are about the same as last year's request.
Can you explain costs appropriated in the general budget?
Yes, I can. That's the money the Water Department pays back to the town the town for their services, like the collectors and treasurer for all those types, and Ed, people behind us that's.
The overhead, is that what you would call it?
I guess, yes. I think so.
Okay, you might need a thunder slide for that one.
I mean, it would be the same as on golf.
No, I understand. I'm just, I'm just putting my Joe Citizen hat on, and I'm looking at this saying, what, you know, I need, if it's not in the explanation, it's going to beg someone asking the question.
Right, and water is a little easier to describe to a resident that where do you pay your water bill? You don't come to the Water Department, you come here. So we have to, you know, pay back these people who are working here on behalf of the Water Department.
I understand. Any board members have any questions? Tracy?
I have one question about your expenses. You said they're relatively level-funded. It looks like they actually decreased a little bit. How much chemicals do you use in water, and how are you being affected?
So we just use one chemical, potassium hydroxide, and we do get that through the county bid, so we've been able to keep that at pretty consistent.
Locked in?
Yeah, it's annual, but that's been pretty consistent. We usually, the, we have to plan for the worst on the chemical line item, like plan that we're going to have to pump more water, so that we usually don't actually spend all the money that we have for chemicals, which is why you'll see sometimes the actual number is lower than our planned, because basically we have to plan for a drought year, so it'd be the most chemical use, that type of thing, so that's why some of our numbers are a little higher for chemical, but for now, we are well within the budget for chemicals.
You know, when that bid, the county bid ends and will be rebid, is it throughout this whole fiscal year?
Yeah, it's back fiscal year.
Anybody else on the board have any questions for our water? Yes. Where does the chemical come from? Is it sourced in the US, or is it sourced?
Yes. Where does the chemical come from? Is it sourced in the US or is it sourced overseas?
I believe it's the company we use is born in Remington. I believe it's made in at their facility in Massachusetts.
Mike, the genesis of that question is is the war in Iraq going to affect it?
Right. I guess I'm not sure where some of the the source products come from, but it is made in Massachusetts.
Well, we found out last week that a lot of the chemicals that that we use for the golf course actually come from
Russia.
Russia. So that's
Bad news.
Very interesting.
So we're going to boycott Russian products?
I think we should.
I think it's a question we're going to have to look at, really. Getting alternative, getting supplies from other other countries. And I think we should be proactive about it. I think we should go be aggressive and looking at what are we buying that's coming from over there? And start thinking about our alternatives right now.
Absolutely. I wouldn't have thought anything before last week. I wouldn't have.
No, but let's be let's let's explore proactively.
I think we should put on an agenda to make it a policy of the board.
Okay, so there you go. There's an agenda item for you. Thank you for sharing this with us. Appreciate that.
Find out where the chemical comes from.
Okay, good.
You'll carry MSDS sheets around?
All right.
I'm kidding. Thank you, Lori.
Thanks.
Now that that we have all of the safe drinking water for the fiscal year wrapped up, then we roll right into our last of the enterprise budgets, which is the the septic enterprise and Jeff's got that covered. Difference between solid waste and septic, we know. What else do we need to know?
Well, you need to know that this is the septic enterprise budget, and hopefully in future years, we'll have a wastewater enterprise budget as well. This just supports the facility on Workshop Road that treats the septic and the expenses have gone up slightly because of the cost of sludge disposal is expected to go up. And the anaerobic digester, which was mentioned before, will hopefully help us to contain that cost when that comes online. So that's probably one of the biggest increases, and it's just modest in this particular budget. But happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Anybody on the board have a question about septic? No, it's a big it's a big topic of discussion in other boards. I'm surprised it doesn't get a lot of discussion here.
I guess I have a question in terms of the chargeback. Ed Ed probably can help. Their chargeback on a $2.3 million expenses is there's no wages. That that could be why there's no benefits. Is that why? Okay. I was just wondering why it was so small compared to the water chargeback, but the benefits aren't ours. Okay.
Now, did you say, looking ahead, that with respect to septic, there'll be also in addition to this, a sewer line item? Or did you say this is likely to morph into a sewer?
Well, I would suggest that that's going to be a decision that our finance team and the selectmen will have to make as to whether you have a separate wastewater enterprise budget. But at least from what we know now, I think it makes sense to have that separate accounting. Because the septic is certainly performed in a different location and also has a different function associated with it.
Very good. Anybody else? Nope. Thank you, Jeff, for an explanation on this. So your next, the next item is the school budget.
So we're done with with all of our special revenues and we move into the educational program for the next two articles. Now, I don't think we have anyone from the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District with us this evening. However, we did get a fairly detailed presentation very recently. And I I would cite, you know, this year, we're extremely fortunate with the the overall costs within the department and our enrollment that the operating budget for the school is up only 1.3% this year. Now, the capital budget is up quite a bit more as a result of the new debt that we're taking on, which is excluded from Prop 2 and 1/2 for the new Dennis and Yarmouth Intermediate School. So that is factored not into the town side of the budget, but it's factored into the school assessment. And that 1,900,000 is not subject to property tax. But I I do want to cite the officials from the DY Regional School District. We had a lot of, you know, more activity. I won't say pressure, but just communications with the school this year. And and I felt that with the addition of David Flynn, that they they really made an effort to to step up. And the level of communication we've had has been extremely strong. And because of the numbers this year, we don't get an opportunity such as this to keep the educational increases less than 2 and 1/2%. And I think that that enabled us to address some of the items on our town side that that were left out of the budget in the past. There's always, you know, with Prop 2 and 1/2, just not enough money to fund everything that goes around. So this year, we've been fortunate there and the the DY school assessment is within the the town's levy limit. And so we're very confident in that regard. And continuing into Article 7 on the educational piece, we've also been very fortunate for the Regional Technical High School in that the overall tuition this year has been favorable for Yarmouth. And the the actual assessment has gone down as as well as the share that we're paying of their their new building. So that comes in at 4,183,000. And, you know, we also thank the the Regional Technical High School officials for very timely information, the meetings that we conducted. The only complaint that that I have in the process is that Bill and I had promised that we were going to go over there to their culinary department and and sample some of the part takings. I've heard a lot about their their lunch program and been there in the past. So we still have as part of the budget process that lunch at the culinary program at the Regional Technical on our our list. We'll report back to you on that as well.
And you're bringing the department heads with you, right?
We should.
Okay, that's good.
We should. They do a great job.
Good to hear.
So that brings us into the the capital budgets. Again, we we start with the special revenue enterprise funds. We have the golf capital, discuss that. At the last meeting, Bill, any observations?
These are predominantly safety related improvements. The trailer includes that, but also reduces wear and tear on equipment by not having to drive the equipment between each facility loaded onto the trailer. And so that reduces wear and tear. But the new garage doors and the lift are necessary because they're not very functional. And pose a potential safety hazard.
Can I just ask a procedural question?
Go right ahead.
Well, it talks about the reserve balance being the 1.873. But it also talks about that in on Article 3, and we're spending 200,000 of it. So I'm just curious. In Article 3, it says, as of 12 11 to 21. So it's kind of clear there that it's going to reduce, but I'm I'm not sure that that same money, when you get to this article, is still going to be available. It's by way of information, but
We'll have to update that. Once you transfer 200,000 out, now there's only 1.673 left.
Correct.
So by the time you get to this article, that's a good point. You're going to have to update that number. No question.
Anybody else on the board?
Good question.
No? Mr. Horgan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Stone?
So that's the the golf. And from there, we roll into Article 9, which is the the water division's normal capital expense. And I don't know if there's any highlights you want to talk about there for the water capital?
I think this year's capital expenses are all pretty typical for what we generally ask for related to well redevelopment. The facilities improvement would be the start of Phase 3 design, which would be basically roof replacements on our chemical feed buildings. And then distribution improvements is just continuing to improve undersized mains. Our production system hardware, again, that's technology. So that's pretty much always going to be changing. We're working to upgrade our SCADA system as we speak. Water meters, again, another technology, particularly the meter readers. We need to update a lot of those at the moment. The roadside mower is a highway request, but we hope to be able to use that, share that with them and do a lot of our long driveways and be able to keep the sides of the driveways clear. And then we have three trucks. A lot of our trucks are getting older and are well beyond the criteria for replacement. And we're also just starting to kind of run short on vehicles for our staff. So we're hoping to be able to fund those three pickup trucks this year as well.
What color will the trucks be?
I like blue.
I'm just, no, I'm asking the question because I get asked about it all the time. Why are the water trucks blue? Why aren't they green like all the other town trucks? And that question comes up quite a bit. I I'm sorry? Because water is blue. That's the answer. That's the talking point for town officials that get asked that question? Okay, that's good to know. Does anybody else have a question or comment?
Are you going to put town seals on them or are you going to hold off?
Right away. You just tell me what seal to put on it.
There you go. Anybody else? Mr. Horgan?
No, thank you.
On the distribution system, this coming year, when with this funding, what particular part of town are you going to really be zeroing in on? With the undersized pipes? Because we have, I mean, it's, as you know, it's a significant problem.
Right. I don't have a specific road roads in mind for this year. I wanted to make sure we got the funding first and be able to kind of look at. I want to coordinate with the town engineer on roads that might be chip sealed and make sure that we do the main before the chip ceiling, that type of thing. But we haven't really put it made a, you know, a real plan of action for those.
Yeah, I think in the next few weeks, we're going to be putting our water commissioner hats on and then wanting to get into some detail on some of the water improvements. I know the flushing program has started. We'd want to talk about that, water conservation and some other things. Anybody else? PFAS is a huge concern. As you know, all the towns are finding detex and including us. And I think with all due respect to the DEP required notices, and they and they pretty much script them out for you. I find that they sometimes create a little bit more confusion than really help and answer inquiries. I I know that's not our fault, but I think to some degree, it prompts us to have more board discussion and create more awareness on the PFAS issue. So I think that's got to be part of the discussion when we when we resume as water commissioners. Selectman Stone, did you have a comment? No? Anybody else?
I agree with those comments.
Okay, thank you.
I have a very quick question, which is a little bit tangential to this thing, is if we have another really dry year and it looks like we're going to. I looked at my crystal ball and are there plans going forward if we do in fact have a drought this summer?
Well, if I can just add, this is one of the reasons why we want to get the water topic back on the board agenda is because we have to talk about a water conservation policy. It's come up before in discussions. They're working on a proposal. We need to hear at least more about what they're thinking of. So that would be part of the agenda item for the next water discussion.
Right. I wasn't necessarily looking for an answer. It's just planting the seed, if you will.
Yes, we're well aware, especially with the wells being off because of PFAS. It's something we'll actually, I'll be in front of you next week to talk about that more in depth.
Excellent.
Yep. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Still here? Yes, our next item.
Oh, yeah, don't go too far.
Special article for a major project in the water department. It's large enough. It requires a borrowing, which is a separate vote that we have to do. And in this case, it's for the replacement of the water main on Route 6A, which is actually like a once in a lifetime opportunity. Maybe you could just talk a little bit about what that project will entail.
Sure. So the the project from the water perspective is replacing the water line from the town of Barnstable line to West Armith Road. So it's a big project. It's important to our operations because the main that's there is probably one of the original mains to the system. So probably built in the 30s. It doesn't have very many valves. So when we have a main break or and and any of any other issues on that line, we end up having to shut down a lot of people and whole neighborhoods because there's no that there's not appropriate valving. So that's why it's important for us. We do get a lot of main breaks and it's currently located under an electrical bank. So for us to get to it and when we need to fix it is very difficult. So that's why it's a priority for us and our and our crew and making sure that when we do have to deal with it, that's, you know, a safer situation for our crew as well.
Can I ask about this article?
Go right ahead.
So the $3.8 million is going to be borrowed. And the payback plan is within your capital because I don't see the that in the capital. So how do we plan on paying for this?
It wouldn't show up this year. After the project, the debt would be incurred and the bond payments would be in the water department budget. It would be attributed to water.
None of it's going to be due back in this fiscal year.
Correct.
Okay.
I said the you said the water lines were from the 30s. What's the material that was used back then?
I believe it's cast. It's cast iron.
Cast iron.
I don't know exactly the year it was installed, but I know that's kind of the first area that was
I see. Selectman Smith?
Also, we we have just discovered as of a few days ago that our good friends are going to be putting in gas lines along 6A, along the same same stretch this year, starting in September or October, which is going to be on top of or beside the water pipes.
Right. Yeah, we'll have to coordinate our work with them, knowing that they're going to be replacing their lines. But I believe they're keeping their lines near their current line. So it shouldn't interfere too much with our current plan.
Yeah, there there's going to be pretty much, they said, running along the south side of of 6A. And I think that's where your water lines are.
Right. And we were planning on putting our new line on the opposite side to get away from all that stuff.
So you're going to put them on the north side?
Yes.
Okay.
So is there any paving involved in that? Or is theirs is theirs is going to be within the road layout, correct?
Right.
Like their other gas lines?
It's Mass Highway. I believe both us and National or National Grid would be required to pave the whole width of a lane that we're in.
Let's back up. National Grid is going to do their work and then want to pave the whole street. And then we're going to be coming in with the water line? And what trenching that new pavement?
We'll have to coordinate with them.
Well, coordinate is
Yeah, we've already started to do some coordination now that we found just recently that that work will be happening along that same stretch that we're planning to do the water main project. Typically, what Mass DOT does when a utility comes in, they don't have you pave curb to curb. It's just that lane that that your utility is in. And so with gas being on the south side or anticipated to be on the south side, they'll have to pave that south side. And with water being on the north side, we'll have to pave the north side, if you will. So it will be new pavement curb to curb. And we need to coordinate that effort. So maybe it could happen at the same time. But it certainly wouldn't be digging up one section of new pavement and then, you know, having to put in a second utility shortly thereafter, having to repave everything. That would be a waste of money. So we do need to coordinate that effort and we're starting to do that now.
So switching it from one side of the road, wouldn't you say that's a waste of money when you could do it all with in the same half of the road and not us not pave it all?
The road needs to be paved anyway, so it's going to get new pavement as part of these projects. And there are separation distance requirements from water and gas. You wouldn't want to put them in the same trench or
They're in the same area now, right? On the same side of the road now? I'm just wondering why we're paying, why we would choose to pay for a state road. I agree, it needs to be paved, but that's the state should be doing that. The town of Yarmouth shouldn't be paying to pave half of the road when we really could make it so we didn't have to. That's very expensive.
We need to continue to coordinate, but we always pave to restore the trench or the area adjacent to the trench, sometimes a little bit wider. In this particular case, we're talking about a lane width, if you will. So there's always paving as part of the utility project, but we do need to coordinate. And we've just started to do that literally in the last couple of days.
We saw the way they left the road with their paving on White's Path for all that time when they put the main down the middle. So that wasn't ideal.
That didn't work out too well.
No.
Not at all.
But they did pave the road curb to curb. And if we can get them to pave it at the end, we'll certainly try that. We have already reached out to Mass DOT to ask them to put additional conditions within the national grid permit that they're still yet having to approve. They haven't approved is what they've told us just today. So we'll ask for additional conditions and maybe that can be the entire road pavement as as their condition. But again, Mass DOT will have to agree to that. But again, Mass DOT will have to agree to that.
Jeff, if you're, if you're moving the, the lines from the south side to the north side. The hookups to the individual homes on the south side are gonna have to be extended. So you're gonna have to dig up the pavement to get to them too, I would think.
The typical process for putting in water services and the gas company does this for services as well. In many cases is to mow under the road. So it won't be cross trenches everywhere. That's still needs to be designed. The money that we have here is not only for. Construction, but is for final design of the water main. It hasn't been finally designed. So we haven't. Determined exactly what construction approach will happen, but in many cases it can be mowed under the pavement, not the main itself, but the services.
Does the traffic have to be shut down when you do a mow?
No.
No, okay. Thank, to be continued.
Quick question, Mark.
Yes.
Last week, we met with some business owners on 6A. Is there any anticipation that when the work is done, that other improvements will be made to 6A? Is any of that being coordinated?
Well, that's one of the, the driving elements with regard to the timing is to make sure that if there are. Elements that, that the community would like to see as part of the road restoration, we can incorporate that at the same time. We're also looking to incorporate potentially some of those in the national grid permit as well. We just need to figure out what those are. That meeting that we had recently and there's a lot of ideas being floated around, but we need to build a consensus as to what those might be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And some, what those improvements wind up looking like will be back in front of the board of selectmen to review and, and approve. So.
Yeah, there's a lot of coordination, you could see. It might be an overused term, but I don't think it's overused in this sense. All right, next item, the fire department capital expenses. Okay, and we've got. Chief and deputy chief approaching the bench.
Hi, chiefs.
Come on, hiya, good evening.
Good evening. So how do we want to kick this one off?
Yeah, so thank you. This, this is a, a normal capital article for us that you see pretty often. It's relatively small. We're replacing an older ambulance. That's our, our fifth ambulance. As you know, we try to buy one every two years. The oldest one by maintaining five. Is generally around nine or 10 years old, which is where this one's at with over 120 on it. And it acts as our spare as well. We run four every single day out of the three stations. The fifth one replaces one when it goes down for either repairs and maintenance. In that way, we keep. Four on the road most of the time. Very rarely we go down to three. And by doing that, we retain more cost recovery from the ambulance billing. By transporting the patients ourselves and not giving them to our neighbors. So it really benefits us to maintain five ambulances. So that's for the ambulance with equipment. And the other one. The engine 42. So we did that internal bar. I mean, that's the first payment of a new pumper that is in Yarmouth Port on Route 6A. We were fortunate enough to buy a demo engine. It actually fits at station two. It's a little bit of a challenge because the depth there isn't as. Long as the other two stations, but worked out well and we didn't have to wait 18 months for a new pumper. So we bought the demo. It worked out for us and we saved money by doing that as well. The deputy will talk on the other two items since they're the grant related ones.
So these are our share of the two grants that we, that we have. So we, we were just notified of the radio grant. Last week that we were approved from that. That's the, so we got approved the 176,000. And the 125,000 is our share of that grant. And the same thing with the, the life pack monitors. We got a $197,000 grant and 20,000 will be our share of that grant.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well done. Board members have any questions or comments regarding this particular article? No? No, it's pretty straightforward. Thanks for the update. And once again, congratulations on all your success. So the next item that we want to take a, take a look at is Article 12, the capital expense, various departments and.
Again, this one covers the, the capital from the, the various departments plus. Certain limited other additional free cash expenses. And it's important to note in Article 12 this year that it incorporates the restoration of $1,100,000. Of roadway maintenance that was the subject of an original debt, not debt exclusion, but a. A property tax override in 2013. And then it was removed from the budget and placed under free cash. And so we've restored those funds completely. And there's a very long list of the items. We don't want to go down them all, but there were. A, a couple of sort of poster child items that were important projects that we, we talked about a little bit that I wanted to give. Some department heads a, a chance to mention. I thought they were particularly important and. One of them, you know, involves the, the leveraging of funds by the police department. That's included in this article to purchase after there was many years of study for a training device. It's a, a shooting trailer and I, I know the chief has been able to secure private funding for that matched with the town. That's gonna significantly enhance training opportunities in the department. Maybe chief, I could just have you say a couple of words on the trailer.
Good evening. You can all smile. It's good. Shooting trailer, we've been asking for, for quite a while. We've had an opportunity over the past few years through tragedy that we all know about. Where we had a lot of generous donors through the Yarmouth Police Foundation. Put in an amazing amount of in-kind. Service, product and cash to build basically a campus on the Yarmouth Police Department. Which will suffice almost all of our training, which we all know the need for training is constant. The last piece is the shooting trailer. We've asked for that for a number of years because it's a problem. We've been facing since we left the old station, which used to have a shooting range. We've had to. Play musical chairs around the Cape, Cape Cod community to find locations to shoot. We keep. Bouncing from one to the other because they get shut down, encroachment, a lot of different reasons. So we're left with the, what's the future gonna look like? We have a solution, the by way of. Some shooting. Trailer technology that has been developed where a company puts together. Shooting can, tray, containers, metal containers, shipping containers. And puts in a high quality shooting. Range, which can be placed in the back of the station. It's environmentally friendly and noise friendly too for our neighbors. Our particular range will have the ability to. Comply with all the weapons we need to train. It's a 25 yard course. It'll. Of fire, which will allow us to qualify with the municipal police training committee. Requirements. So we can do it right in the back of a station. Which will also help us with efficiency in training our officers, get better use of our training time. And the big pot through the Yarmouth Police Foundation, they've committed $300,000, which is almost half of, of what the cost is. The current ask is $319,000. We cut that back. I have a little bit of concern because of like everybody, the prices of everything keep going up, but we've been assured that we'll be able to somehow make it work. So that is it in a nutshell.
Thanks, chief. Any questions? Comments?
I have a question.
Selectman Post.
The question about, is that, is that trailer like the, similar to the, like the thin blue line trailer that you had many years ago?
Yes, exactly. Yeah, that I think some of you, I'm, I think, I know you did. You came and used it. We rented that for one night out of some grant money.
So, so there is some. Lead or leftover is, how expensive is it to dispose of that? Is that in your budget?
The lead itself is not difficult to expose because once it's, it's, it's the dust that is, that is more of a, a concern. But with the right ventilation and within that shooting trailer and the maintenance that we do with it, with a HIPAA. Vacuum. We, we shouldn't have any problems at all. We, we, we've discussed that with the board of health as well as gone up to Cape Gun Works who have a much larger range. Watch how they do it, what has to be done. We took a trip out to New York where one of these trailers was to see how they do it. Ironically, when the, when the lead goes into the trap, there are just basically two white buckets. They're smaller than the, the average size. They might be a two gallon bucket. And then the, the lead funnels into them. When it's done, you put, put the cover on it and you got a bucket full of lead and it's not. Really much of a contaminant. It's more the, the airborne lead. Like I said, the ventilation keeps it contained and then we have to do the required maintenance on it.
Excellent. And in terms of the required maintenance and all that, has that been already factored into your operational budget?
Yeah, there will be some annual costs and it depends too. One thing we're looking at, there's lead free ammunition. Which kind of gets rid of a lot of those types of questions that you're asking. The problem with it is it's a little bit more expensive. The deputy has been searching around. There are some other. Prices out there that are available, but unfortunately with our procurement laws in Massachusetts, we can't, can't get it there. We'd have to. Travel a different route to try to get the press prices.
Well, I know it's been many years in the making and. Glad to see it on here and will be good to see it in use. Thank you.
Anybody else on the board? Questions, comments?
Oh, I just have one more question about a different, a different article about the, the cruisers and the body worn cameras. Have we negotiated that and all of the contracts already? Is that?
The body worn cameras, yes.
So it's in both counters? Cause I know for a while it was only one. I just want to make sure before we purchase them that we're able to utilize them.
Yep, we're all set. Deputy Chief Lennon is working with both unions. Part of the deal was they get to work on the policy. But also there's through the posts and the. Police reform legislation, there is a committee on body worn cameras. They'll be coming out with the recommendations in the near future. So it may be, have to be amended accordingly, but we think we're, you know, it's kind of funny because. Body worn cameras have been used for decades in other parts of the country. So it, it was kind of foreign to the legislators that, you know, oh, we gotta make sure we do this right, but. Basically these, you know, we're, we're basically using the same policies that have been developed through years of court challenges, et cetera, and best practices. So we're gonna, I'm pretty sure we're gonna be within a, a 95% accuracy on what they're gonna recommend.
Great. I was just gonna say, we probably don't have to recreate the wheel on that one. I'm sure that we're gonna learn and benefit from the successes and failures of. Some of the communities. So it's great to see that moving forward. Thank you.
Just a quick follow.
Sure, by all means.
Can you tell me when the body cam program will be fully operational?
Deputy.
Good evening, Deputy Chief Lennon with the police department. So I've been in touch with the salesman from WatchGuard, which was acquired by Motorola. They're not giving us an estimated ship date yet. So we are hoping we have a midsize order compared to some of the larger agencies that jumped on before we did, but we're hoping to have it operational by the summer.
Do we know if there's any other communities on the Cape that are getting ready to, to pass this so that we could join in with them and have a bigger order?
Not with the, the company we went with. Mashpee is using WatchGuard right now. There's really no other police department that I know of that's made the steps that we have to order them. And the state police went with WatchGuard. So we, we actually took their policy and went through it. And in consultation with the district attorney's office and a couple of the groups to make sure that it fits, it fits our department. So our policy is modeled after the state police.
And the other thing, the, the purchase is gonna go through the state bidding process, which is already, they're on the state contract. So. There's not a lot of wiggle room there. There were a couple of different ways of doing it along the leases, et cetera, but I think we've got the best deal. That we could do and I'm not sure we could do any better. It's. Good work.
That's great. Any other questions from board members?
Glad you're getting chairs.
So can we just go back to that then? Cause this is a lease. So this is the first of other payments set.
So we're doing an as a service plan. So we're stretching the payments over a period of five years. So the total cost of the project is a little over 250,000. So we're basing it's $50,000 a year. So it's a, we're paying a monthly fee, but in doing that, we're saving money in the long run. We could have purchased the equipment upfront. And then we would have had an on-premises server, which is working with IT. We wanted to get away from, so we're not maintaining more hardware here. Everything will be in the cloud. And by doing it, then as a service plan, we're actually able to bundle a cruiser camera, any body camera and save money.
No, my concern is, I think it's a great idea. I know what, we recently just passed the article. So we were able to do this through a lease. My concern always is future years tying the hands of future town meetings and not knowing. You know, if you're gonna be able to fund subsequent years. I'm not sure how, how you can, how we, I, I know there's a provision. Bob told me there's a provision, but it just makes me very nervous that. We're entering into something for one year and then next year, if there's a problem getting it passed, what do we do?
When I was talking with the salesman about this, I was told that if we decide to switch companies, whatever happens, we just end the contract with Motorola.
Anybody else?
Just a comment. I, I would assume that the contract is gonna be subject to those conditions that you just mentioned, deputy chief. That is subject to appropriation.
Yes.
And that being a term of the contract, if there's no appropriation, you'll be able to get out of it.
Right.
I don't, I don't see any downside there.
I would just add.
Go right ahead.
Very briefly, before we let the chiefs go and, and, and again, on the ongoing cost for the body worn camera system. What we find overall, the costs of the equipment are really smaller than the cost of administering the entire program moving forward. So. You know, there's ample opportunity if we needed to pull out and change companies, but I think that we'll always have. We'll always have a, a cost for maintaining this technology and sort of in that vein, I, I really need to acknowledge both of these chiefs for their efforts this year. That I've just been very impressed with the way they've worked with the capital program committee to significantly address some of the department's technology needs. Whether it's, you know, getting that lease in place for the body worn cameras, the mobile technology, the tablets. The overall use of technology in the department for a couple of fellows that are a little gray on top as I think we're all getting. I, I'm just astounded by the way they've involved this entire department. In moving, you know, into the new technology that supports law enforcement and you can see it throughout this, the CIP and. That's why, one of the things I was glad to be able to have these items in there to help supplement the operating budget. And it's a pretty lean budget overall, but I, I think there's some pretty significant upgrades that are going on here and, and I, and I think that. You know, that's all on the command staff here. So it's, it's really great to see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chiefs.
I guess, unless there's anything else. Is there anything else in the capital budget that you wanted to speak to or address? Because there are a number of other items in there. I just. Want to give you the opportunity just in case, just if you want.
We'll discuss the cruisers, is that?
We'll do cruisers, next article. One, if we can. Kind of wrap up on 12. Jane Kane is with us this evening from the library as, as well and. And, and I did want to point out before we jump into the cruisers, which is another great story. There, there is an item in for a site feasibility study, including some pretty intensive public outreach. That is gonna try to help us move to the next phase of discovery on our library upgrade project.
What I'd like to do is finish up with the police department while they're here. Let's get that squared away and then we can go to Jane right after that. All right. So while you're here, let's, let's just move ahead a little bit to Article 13, if you could just put that up. We're gonna come back to 12, but I think while we've got the chiefs here. I don't want to have them keep coming back up and back and forth. Let's try to get their stuff taken care of now.
This is the first time we're, we're jumping into something like this. So we're looking to purchase six cars because our fleet is in tough shape. So by doing this lease, lease to own program, we're spacing the payments out over four years. So it's gonna afford us to get six cruisers. They're gonna be SUV hybrids. And with the hybrid with our cruisers, it's a, it's a little different. We really see a savings when the vehicle is idling. That's when we have a, a large amount. That's when we have a large amount of fuel consumption when the vehicle is idling because we have so much, there's a lot of electronic equipment that has to run all the time. So when the cruiser idles, the engine shuts off and the battery component kicks on and it powers all of the electronics. So when the car is sitting on the side of the road, we should see a savings. From a presentation we did before, I believe they said the average savings is about $2,500 in fuel costs per car for idling purposes. So we're working with Ford out of Plymouth through this project. We gave the, I gave the proposal to the town administrator. We looked at it and it seems to be good because we can get six cars for a much less cost than going before the capital budget committee and asking for $300,000 to try and do six cars all at once. And then we'll probably see a little bit of a savings or allow us to make sure that the cruisers are outfitted properly by trading in some of our current cars that are in tough shape, but there is some value to them to trade them in.
Sounds good. Anybody have any comments or questions for the chiefs?
I do. Is the same basically with my nervousness with with the tasers and tying future town meetings. That doesn't say I don't think we need to replace cruisers. I do. I just get concerned about using this. And this more so than the tasers, the taser is not a lot of upfront costs, but what I'm nervous about is the cost to equip these vehicles in the first year. So yeah, the argument's okay. If it doesn't work out, we can't get it appropriated, which this town's always supported. I don't think it's going to be a problem, but if it was, after a year's time, we have to give it back, right? So it seems simple, but in these cars, we spend a lot of money to equip these cars. So I don't want to see that happen. And that's what I'm nervous about. I want to make sure we protect our equipment. So in this $88,000 per year, is there, is there costs for equipment within this money or is that separate?
It's all built in.
It is. And so what portion of it is equipment?
A cruiser is about $40,000 and then we have to sit, and the problem they're running into now is Ford completely redesigned the new SUV. So our light bars from our 2018 cars don't fit on the 2021. So we have to buy new light bars, but Lieutenant Bryant does a great job going over item by item by item on the cruiser with the dealership to say, okay, what can we salvage? Is it a push bar? Is it a speaker? So what, back to your original question, Tracy, I believe the car is about $40,000 and then we have to outfit it. So we put on a ballistic driver's side door that will stop rounds. That's about $2,500. There's a couple of the things that we do. We put in the spotlights. A lot of police departments don't do that because that's an extra cost because you have to drill into the pillar. That has to be done at the factory. That can't be an aftermarket thing. Our cages are different. The seats that we put in the back are different. So there's enough fit costs and then the expense of putting all the equipment in.
And some of the other equipment we buy individually, like the MDTs, which the deputy is working on now, those are purchased separately every five years. That is our equipment. The GPS devices, that is our equipment. The cruiser cameras, once those get in, those will, that's all our equipment as well. They are not included in the purchase price of the cruisers we're asking for right now.
So I abstained from this vote because I didn't hear really an explanation as far as the dollars. I just want to make sure that however, however much money in a year's time, we're able to recoup that or that the town has a plan to fund this some way so that we don't invest the money and then have a problem. We should have a backup plan. That's my point. We need to have a backup plan so that the town can retain the vehicles at least for a certain amount of time. And that was my only hesitancy. I just, I just, I know that this is new, that we're allowed to do that, but we've never been allowed to tie the hands of future people. So that's, that was the argument was, well, we'll just give it back. Well, on a taser, that's one thing. You can hand it back. You don't have anything invested in it. But given this car back, that's a lot of money invested in that. So that's, that's my only argument on that point.
Anybody else on the board have any questions regarding Article 13? All right. I think that's it. Thanks for coming before us tonight. It's great to see you. Well done.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Chiefs.
All right, now we're going to go back to the Article 12, capital expenses, and we're going to get a discussion on the latest with the library and the feasibility study from Jane Kane.
Good evening, everyone.
Thanks, Jane. Good to see you.
Nice to be here. So for years, we've been studying the situation of the facilities at the library, at least since I came here, and it's almost been a good 10 years, nine years. And prior to that, there have been studies done on the facilities going back to the 90s. Our study committee made a recommendation to the board a couple of years ago and since then have evolved into a planning committee. And the planning committee has been in the process of gathering information. We've been working with different departments to find out what options we have for a million, million different details. So in meetings with town administration, with economic development, with our planning people, it's been determined at this point that it's time that we make those studies a little more specific to a variety of factors, whether it's a location study or it's all different things, ventilation issues that we've had that have been highlighted in the past two years of pandemic existence. And as you folks know, you've had presentations and talks from our study people and from staff to understand that the current facilities just have a lot of physical needs that we need to address. So this is going to move us along, hopefully closer to a state announcement of a grant. We've been waiting for years for that. It's been long in the making. And so we've set, we've put together this request to set aside money to do further study. Are there questions?
Select one post.
Well, the reason we've been talking about it for so long is because it's hard to find consensus. So you have two very strong opinions about library. You have a central library and then you have people who are very adamant about the community feel of their local library. So and I remember the last meeting I attended, and I know you had done some, some surveys. Have you made any progress prior to this funding, I should say, in finding common ground? Does your committee have a plan in terms of, I know you want to use the money for some feasibility, but are we still having the conversation at this point of whether or not we go to a central library or a community library, or is that part of this process again?
I think we continue to seek input and maybe at this stage bring in an objective consultant who can help us have those type of conversations, listening sessions or whatever it might be. But when I talk to the planning committee about that, they're fairly convinced that the folks are going to ask for facts and they're going to ask for cost comparisons and they're going to ask for, you know, professionals' opinions on what a good location would be or what a good use of the south facility location would be or the west facility location. I mean, I just think that conversation needs more meat around the bones and this will help us to get there.
I hope you're right.
I hope so too.
It's been difficult. I know. Like I said, I've sat in some of your meetings and it's hard. I just, I just feel at some point in time, you know, we need to come up with a plan because our facilities are in great need and, you know, you don't want to throw good money after bad in terms of, you know, upgrading one particular facility if we're going to move to a central, but it sure would be nice if we could come to a consensus and utilize the money to actually create a plan. Because we've done, as you said, a lot of studies and I'm not sure you're going to find any different information.
Right, but time's a ticking and I think something needs to be done.
I completely absolutely agree with you.
So there can be the conversation, you know, the, I guess, I don't know, tours of the building and that kind of thing. Again, those would be ideas that we could generate with some objective consultation, but the last time that a building renovation has been done in this town is 50 years ago for the South Yarmouth Library Edition, an undersized edition that houses the children's programming, but there's no restroom on that floor. So, so year after year, it just goes by that the buildings get older and older and more and more used that I think it just makes a lot of sense to me to do new construction and to the committee, but we'll try to convince the public as well.
I absolutely agree. I think it's time to move forward. It's absolutely time to move forward and
I've also been told recently, which I think is very enlightening, that the two facilities as they exist are valuable real estate properties for other uses. So that could be part of this feasibility study. What would be alternative uses?
Well, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. And that'll be a fascinating study that we'll all participate in. So we, okay, on Article 12, you want to?
You ready, Peter?
Can I just say one more thing while I'm sitting here?
Please.
Oh, excuse me, Peter. But we did in the recent past, update the library website so that there is information up there if people are interested about the activities of the library planning committee. And there are a lot of studies and things up there that folks can click on and take a look at. I know, Bill, you've mentioned that, that we need some more information that's accessible quickly and easily. So it's getting there.
I think, Jane, that's, you know, the threshold question as to centralization or preserving the village libraries. And until that question gets addressed definitively, we're not going to get a resolution. We have to get some, as much community input as we can.
Right.
There has to be as much education as possible to let people know what the needs are and what the existing detriments are and then lay out the alternatives and locations and costs and things like that. So it's a multifaceted analysis. But again, the core question is whether you're going to go central or with the village libraries. And there's a lot of strong feelings about preserving the character of the village library. So I don't know where that's going to lead, but we'll see.
Sure. We're getting a lot of communication actually in the recent past since, since our information went out at the fall town meeting and things like that. People are reacting. So it's nice to hear from folks.
Question. I don't know whether you can answer this, Jane, but is it possible to do something like a ballot question to kind of get a foundation of where the town is on this question?
I think that's what I envision a feasibility study is. You can shape it so that you, part of your feasibility is whether or not it's likely to be approved or likely to be accepted.
Is it, I think we all.
Again, I think it's a professional consultant who might help us
Okay.
get to that point.
We all know there's a divide. I just don't know how big the divide is and, you know, where the town is tilting toward. It'd be nice to have that information before we went too much further.
So we continue with surveys and input gathering and information?
Well, the game plan is to engage some professional services to conduct some outreach in the community, to have listening sessions, to share more information. And I think that the idea is, is after that point where we've generated more information, where we've had that discussion, where we've invited the community and tried to outreach folks, perhaps that would be the point that we would, you know, take the temperature of the community and find out, you know, by a vote, it's going to have to be voted eventually where people are leaning. I think some of the feeling is that there's not enough information that people have readily available to them, you know, to make a final decision on it and that hopefully what, what this study can do is to bring us closer to that point.
Okay, I thought that there's been an awful lot of that study going on and that we really just need to kind of.
People need to be aware too that, I mean, if you go to the website and you look under the about section, which talks about our staff and our board and things like that, there's a section for the library planning committee. And in that section is a link to like 118 page study, the most recent facility study. It gives a lot of condition information and it gives a lot of, well, a little bit of cost comparison, just big umbrella overall cost comparison. So that would be a good place for folks to start, but then they need to, I think, talk about it a lot together among themselves and with us.
Okay. Finally, any projection on when the state grants might become available?
I wish I could tell you, Dan, but I thought fiscal year '25 or '26. And that's hopeful.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Jane, thank you for all the work you do.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
So I guess next one's 14.
Right. And thank you, Jane, for sticking with us this evening. I, yeah, I thought we could combine 14 from sanitation for the purchase of a roll off truck with Article 15 from the transfer station for the capital item with an additional weighing scale. I don't know if, I know our, our poor DPW team has had a lot of mileage tonight, but you've got some great items on. Maybe just brief update on those.
Yes, thank you. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director and Robie Whitehouse, Assistant Public Works Director. Back up to talk about the sanitation, the roll off truck is, again, a 13 year old vehicle, as it says in the description here, it's got over 300,000 miles. It's a workhorse of the operation and it's being paid for out of the recycling fund. So this is a separate article because it's not lumped in with the other funding sources. And there's a balance that's shown on the screen here. It's 398,000 and change within that fund. Could it come more than pay for this piece of equipment? Do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I think it's, that's all very clear. This particular truck takes all of the material that is recycled off Cape. So our metal, our cardboard, our newspapers and our mixed paper. It does put in a lot of road miles. And our team does a great job taking care of them, but we definitely look for our recycle funds to offer an offset to cover these funds.
Okay, we'll go to the next one. Then we'll take questions on both. Let's go to 15.
All right, the next one is the scale associated with the commercial transfer station. This is being paid for out of funds that Covanta provides for quarterly. And there's significant funds or there's sufficient funds to pay for the $195,000 expense associated with that new scale. It'll make the operation significantly safer. I don't know if you want to add to that, Robie?
Yeah, for those of you at home who don't know it, our commercial transfer station is owned by the town of Yarmouth, but it is leased out to Covanta. Covanta staffs it and takes care of all of the waste that comes into that facility. And they have been regularly supplying funds into a capital budget account to cover this and other expenses. And this is their top priority to alleviate some of the safety concerns that they have for traffic at that facility. They're looking to put in a second scale at that facility that will allow for traffic to exit the property rather than circling back onto the same scale. The current scale that's there is needing some repair. So it'll also allow for an opportunity for that first oldest tail to be repaired.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments on 14 and or 15?
I have one question about the, about the lease to Covanta and how is this capital not inclusive in their lease requirements? Just the maintenance would be is?
That's correct. They're required to maintain the equipment. This is a capital request and it was envisioned back in 2014 when the town set up this lease arrangement that they would set aside some amount every quarter for capital improvements and that's what these funds are.
Okay. So the repair of the scale that's there would be something that would fall onto them?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Just making sure. I happen to remember the.
Okay, all right, just making sure. I I happen to remember the that conversation, but it was vague.
So, Peter?
No questions.
Dan?
All set. Thank you.
So I follow up to Tracy's question and just for clarification. So the repair also is coming out of those sequestered funds?
No, the repair would be on on their dime, part of their operation.
They would pay the repair for the for the existing scale?
Yes.
For the older scale?
And the new scale, if that needs maintenance, that would be on.
And the ongoing maintenance of the new scale. Okay, thank you very much. I don't have anything further.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you again.
So now we have Article 16 Recreation Revolving Fund.
And I wonder if Amy wants to join us. We have Recreation Director Amy Howell. Just a couple of words. This is a project we worked on with a team from several of the town departments and I I think it's going to be quite an improvement.
Amy, do you want to identify yourself for the people at home, please?
Amy Howell, Recreation Director.
Why don't you explain to us just in brief briefly the that the recreation article for going to a revolving fund and why we need to do that, what the advantages are?
Sure. So effectively, the revolving fund is going to replace our offset account. And that allows us to carry over a small fund, a cushion from one fiscal year to the other, which will help us with unforeseen maintenance costs, subsidizing programs and even to help offset any type of small capital requests.
And what what, how will this flexibility be able to aid the recreation department versus the existing financial structure?
So right now, any type of funds that we have left at the end of a fiscal year, it goes back into the general fund. And as everyone has kind of said tonight, we have increasing maintenance costs that we can't foresee, increasing costs for goods and services. And so being able to have a little bit of a cushion will help us kind of offset that instead of having to raise program fees or not even being able to run a program just because it's not fiscally reasonable to even do. So just gives us really just a small cushion to kind of just make us a little bit more secure.
So this give you a lot more flexibility in your budget?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Questions or comments? Dan?
No, we've been through this. It's a great move.
Tracy?
Is there a policy that's set in place in terms of revolving fund? After it's created, I I guess I'm just I like the flexibility and I know that as we discussed before, some of the programs are not profitable and some are, and we like to keep them going. But when you talk about small capital items, I'm just wondering what the process of expenditure is. So it's done just within, there's no doesn't, it doesn't take a town meeting vote, so to speak. So what I'm curious about in terms of a policy is, you know, to me, capital is great, overhead's great, but I think the the majority of the money should be spent in programming. And I wouldn't want to see this fund become a way that a future board will say, well, you have a revolving fund, so you should buy your pickup truck and that now. And you should buy, and you know what I'm saying? So I think that there should be a policy that a small percentage should be used for small articles, you know, items, but the majority of this is to improve recreational programming and not to take the money from recreational program to spend it on other things.
Is Ed still here?
He is, yes.
Can you come up?
Yes, I can.
I I think somebody said at one of the earlier presentations that the Mass DOR prefers revolving funds for these kinds of programs. Is that true?
No, it it, what they don't like are offset accounts. So that's why when.
Which is what, which is what we're operating with now.
Absolutely. So we're one of the few towns. We used to have a lot of offset accounts. We've gotten rid of all except for recreation. And it's been on the list that I put for Bob when he first got here as one of the things that we should move away from.
So you're supportive of this?
Absolutely.
Addressing Tracy's question, what what safeguards her concern about using this money for other than programming and perhaps diverting some of it into capital expenditures?
So we can, we can set up a policy that the board can review and give their blessing to as it relates to this. One of the things we're doing is setting this up now, but it's really going to be an ability to actually start using this fund for next year. So we, we're still going to pass an offset account for the offset account during this budget for fiscal year 23. Then what we do is we get future revenues for the next fiscal year where people will book their programming with the recreation department. That'll go into this revolving fund that's upcoming. So we have time and we purposely set it up that way in the meeting that we had so that we can actually make sure that this is going to get off to a good start and it's going to function properly. So we can put together those policies and make sure that the board is comfortable with them.
So our wages aren't going in to be paid through. How are the wages going to be structured?
Well, we currently have wages in our offset account.
So those will move into?
Yeah, and those are wages not for all of the full-time staff. Those are wages for the seasonal programs. So those folks that work on the seasonal programs, those wages are in, will move over to the revolving.
I just think that we should work on a policy because I think that we're going to find that this offset accounts there, we're going to be trying to move wages and capital. And I just, I I think that the town should have some type of structure in place on how it's going to be expended.
And with this specific, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, this specific revolving account, you cannot take full-time wages out of it. And I can only carry $10,000 over. So I'm not, you're not looking to a fiscal year. So that's all I can carry. So for this specific, which is kind of why we went with this one, it was a little bit easier to handle. And you're not talking about carrying over 50, 60, $70,000 where those issues that you're talking about now come into place where hey, you have $50,000 sitting in your revolving account, you can fund your car, that won't even be feasible with this type of revolving account. So it's really just a small cushion of about $10,000 that we'll be able to carry over every year that will help us put back into the programs like you said.
Just for clarification, Ed, the seasonal wages are, as you said, there there's no difference between the revolving count and the offset receipt account. They're both paying for that seasonal labor out of those program funds, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Peter?
I I was gonna say, Ed, I'm sure you're going to generate a a sub-account financial statement, income and expense for for this.
Absolutely. I mean, they
It goes without saying.
Just like the offset account thing, we can't really have them run into a deficit. So unless we get the okay from the Board of Selectmen and the public, but you know, we, we, we look at everybody's accounts very closely.
Amy will run it so efficiently, there will not be a deficit.
Right.
Dan? Mark?
I'm fully supportive of this. I think it's going to make your life easier. It's going to make Ed's life easier. It's going to make, and then Bob's life will be easier. So I think it's a I think it's a no-brainer. It's a home run. I'm not worried about the policy. We can easily work that up and everybody will be happy. So.
All right. Thank you, Amy, and thank you.
Thank you. Good work on that.
Mark, we're on.
Number 17.
Next one. Now, Article 17, we discussed last week, that is just the set aside for funds to fund collective bargaining agreements that we're putting into place. And there's a couple of those under negotiation now, so we'll need the funds for those. And after that one, we move into a couple of interesting articles. The first one, Article 18 is the creation of a wastewater infrastructure stabilization fund, which will take the lion's share. We discussed earlier, the short-term rental income, place it in a stabilization fund that can be used for future wastewater expenses. And that's part of our original financing plan to set aside those funds. And that's allowed, it's an acceptance of a state law for that. And then moving into Article 19, we have.
Can we stop, can we just stop on 18 for just a second?
Sure.
I just want to make sure if 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 board members have any questions, we can address them. I think one of the explanations that will be needed is how does this fit in with the other funds? I think you might need to have one of those slides or explanations ready to go with all the other things that we've done. We created this whiff. It's easy, it's very easy to ask, how does this fit with the other thing that we created? How many different funds do we have? So I think we just need to be prepared to answer those questions at town meeting. And I think a legitimate question to ask on this one is, how much money do we think is likely to be coming into this fund? And I know there'll be an opportunity to address that as well.
So it's in excess of a million a year, maybe 1.1, we'll put two started off now.
Yeah.
What would be in excess of a million, 100% of what's collected?
The 100% of the collections, it's even up this year. You could estimate that that might, you know, might wind up being in the 1.4, 1.5 million for 100%. And so if you take 75% of those collections, you know, you're over a million.
All right, so that, okay.
And what are we saying the other 25% for? Dedicate, let us in 25%.
That is to assist with the general fund with right now, you know, right up against Prop 2 and 1/2.
So this was, we were going to get back to talking about the percentage, correct? Whether or not the board was supportive of the 75% or did I miss the meaning where this is what everybody? Because I, I thought we were going to go with 100% of those funds into this into this. That was the original program. You know, they set this up.
No, I understand. I think this is.
Not to go into the general fund. There was a.
I'm not sure we've had a.
For this. And our program was for 100%. So I'm just want to make sure that everybody here understands that what this is.
My memory is the same as yours, that initially we talked about dedicating 100% of those funds, but I vaguely recall some subsequent discussion. I don't remember how it turned out, however, and whether we we've come ultimately to to a decision that we were going to dedicate 75%. I don't recall where that, does anybody know where that figure comes from?
The 75% that was the number that we estimated for this, it was based on the amounts in the original in the original plan that, you know, we've somewhat exceeded those collections. So that kept that amount the same. And at the same time, reserves 25% assist with the general fund to take more of the pressure off property taxpayers. But if you want to make a different recommendation at town meeting.
Yeah, I know. I know. We already voted on it. I'm sorry to bring it up. I don't know why I didn't catch my eye the last time. It should have. We must have been just going down the list, but, you know. Personally.
I think you can amend it.
You can amend it. You can also revisit it at a subsequent town meeting.
Right.
Correct. Yep.
You know.
So you can change that?
You can change.
From year to year or from meeting to meeting?
I believe it's a town meeting vote that's required. Is that true, Ed?
Yeah, I think Bob knows better than I, but yes.
Okay.
Yes. Town meeting vote. The only thing that you can't do is you can't revoke the whole fund for three years. So that's your only.
Obligation. Yeah.
Right.
Well, I think we're missing the point of the whole legislation. If we don't use it for wastewater or affordable, I think that it was.
No, I.
I support 100% of the fund going into wastewater.
I don't recall, I recall having an initial discussion when we proposed the idea and brought it up, but we never took any action on it. And then I would agree with you. I think this has come up in the context of this warrant, this proposal. We just haven't spent the kind of time on it that we probably should have in hindsight. I would argue this is a good first step. And then I think there's an opportunity to revisit it and make adjustments. The financial, but the financial plan is being adjusted constantly right now on wastewater.
That was a good first step, but 25% in the general fund is probably a significant amount of money and it's, you know, I just think that once it's gone, we're never, we're not, we're going to have a hard time.
I'm going to make an argument in defense of the general fund. I mean, those are the funds that we utilize to help keep our levy down as much as we can. So I mean, there is, it's not like it's a downside. There there's an upside to it. It provides a financial cushion in other areas. So, I mean, it's not like we're losing it. It's going someplace. No, it stays within the town's balance sheet. And it's used to help at least reduce the necessity for for a tax increase. So I'm very comfortable with the 75%, but I do think, Tracy, it's healthy to revisit it and ask if it's given, I mean, the way we're looking at the revenues, the way they're going right now. And as Simon said before, this particular account is showing that the economy is bouncing back and businesses are doing well. So I don't see any reason if if things continue to get better.
Well, there's two sides to that too, because the cost of actually building a septic plant is increasing every day as well. So I'm just saying, once it's in the general fund, chances are we're going to have a difficult time pulling it out of there and getting it back. We've learned that with the roads. Ed did a great job getting that back, but that was hard work. Didn't come easy.
Selectman Smith, did you want to say something? You had the the look of a question on your face.
There was, there was some discussion that the 75% was going to give us sufficient funds in in the first year. And if we needed to revisit it in subsequent years, we would. That's my memory.
That's your recall of the discussion?
And that's probably true. But the thing is, is we're trying to build a balance so that we're not working from a deficit. We need the whole point was, we were supposed to be doing this previously so that we had enough money in there. So we don't want to have just enough. We need more than just enough. That will be for future board.
Okay. Selectman, any anybody else on this one?
No, I'm I'm comfortable. It's a conservative way to approach it and it can be adjusted yearly. It matches, actually, I think what we're doing with the DIF, 75, 25. So it's consistent.
Okay, thank you. Article 19, this is on amending the Tourism Preservation Fund. It might be helpful to refresh our memory on why we're doing this.
And what this does specifically is it amends the tourism fund by accepting the short-term rentals from the calculation for the subsidy for tourism, which reverts to the way the system was designed when the numbers were calculated before the short-term rentals existed. And secondarily, with the creation of the wastewater infrastructure fund, rather than have those funds go towards the tourism piece, we're going to send them towards the wastewater.
75% of them.
Correct.
Any comments or questions? Any more discussion on on this one? Is there anything else you want to highlight on this one?
Nope, that's the.
Article 20.
That one. And then what Article 20 does is it appropriates the fund for the tourism revenue preservation. And I know Karen Green here this evening, if there's any other questions, she's been instrumental in working to put together this program. There's been a change that folks will see at town meeting from the previous year in that in working with town council, we've identified some improvements to our implementation of the act as it's written. And he has requested that we put into place the specific program areas that funds will be used for under the Tourism Preservation Fund. So we have in there the special events, marketing, public improvements, economic development, and there's also the administration item. It's the overhead for that. So folks will see those individual areas. I think that'll grant a little more transparency to the overall expenditures out of that account and maybe answer a lot of folks' questions and things.
Now, does the warrant, and the warrant that I have here doesn't have the admin number. Does the warrant?
It's the new one.
Forty does here?
First, first item in there, 40,000.
No, I'm talking.
And it's also included in the.
I don't have it in my warrant.
Wording of the article, the amounts. Yeah, so the.
Yeah, see, my warrant doesn't have it.
Right.
So we're getting different warrants here. There's something.
His does not have it.
Okay.
It's just dated 4/4.
It's the one that was in my packet.
So this is the 40 here.
I must be getting a different packet than the rest of it.
You get the.
I I I see. Longest, I just want to make sure that it's in the warrant.
See your other numbers to see if they're.
Yeah, the other numbers are fine. Okay. Are there any? Are there any other questions?
442.
I have not, it was the one that was in my packet, that's the one that I'm looking at, so that's all right. Anybody else on the board have a question?
Oh, changes.
Okay, let's move, Mr. Smith, go right ahead.
I was gonna say that the marketing primarily goes to the Yarmouth Chamber and their contract is up.
This year.
This year. And it was originally written for 18 months, so this one would be up for, you know, to be, to be renewed. And it goes out to bid.
And we talked about that last week, we have the bid, it's, it's out now. We'll be getting proposals in over the next several weeks and we'll have a recommendation for you.
That's great. Anybody else? Okay, let's move on to the next one, which is the.
And this is another piece of the wastewater financing. I'll turn it over to, to Bill, who's our district improvement financing expert.
I'm going to go through the article and the description. What I've done is actually add a few slides that you don't have there to answer some of the questions we had at the last meeting. What is a diff? It's to establish a dedicated revenue stream to support investments such as public infrastructure. Basically, as part of the new growth goes back to pay for the note for the infrastructure. Is a diff a tax break? No, it is not a tax break. It actually takes the new growth that's already being paid by the property owner and allocates it to the debt. Is there an impact to the property owner in a diff district? No, they, they pay the tax bill and then we determine how much to allocate of their tax bill of new growth. So new growth is defined as an actual improvement. So it's not that it's a market increase or things like that. So the town keeps the base, which is in the diff report. There's a whole bunch of properties listed, those properties have a base value now. The town still collects taxes on the base, they collect taxes on new growth associated with market increases. The diff collects the percentage that we believe we need to fund wastewater on the new growth. So does a diff reduce the tax revenue? I'll show you in a later slide that without the diff and without some of these other funding sources, you don't have wastewater and therefore you don't have the new growth that you're collecting on. So it doesn't take the base, it doesn't take the market increases and the new growth it's taking is associated with the improvement that's associated with the diff. Why not receive the new revenue in the general fund and borrow from the program? Well, the borrowing in this case is not included in the city's debt limits under a diff. So that's an advantage. The borrowing has a definitive revenue stream in this case. So the diff is a definitive revenue stream that you don't have to return to a town meeting each time. And the borrowing does not require a new taxation. It is taking that growth, that new growth, it is not adding a new tax to any property owner.
Yeah. One of the things that I would recommend, Bill, is taking out the term city and maybe inserting the town, town. That, that'll, that'll be, that'll be a point of discussion.
Other slide.
Yeah.
So the cycle of economic development and investment, you can see diff, mass works, betterments, user fees. As you go down that green box, the diff is something that doesn't really impact property owners. Mass works is a grant that we'll probably be going after, that doesn't really impact property owners. But the betterments and user fees do impact property owners. So we're trying to position those less impactful, you know, opportunities in front of the betterment. So once we calculate the diff, once we know what the whiff and these other funds are going to do, then we can make adjustments in the diff percentage to try to reduce some of the, the betterments. So those types of things fund wastewater revenue for infrastructure. The investment comes in, private economic development occurs. And one of our goals beyond obviously getting the wastewater project done is increasing the commercial levy. As you can see, we're at 91% of residential, 5% of commercial, 5.89. So what we want to do is a secondary impact, impact is increasing the commercial levy to reduce the impact on the residential. And what we're doing at this stage is in the green and the lavender colors, the green color is both an IRD and a DD, which is the investment revenue district and the development district. The invested revenue district is a district from which you collect the revenue and the development district is where you spend it. The lavender color is only a DD. It is an area where we didn't think we were going to get a lot of revenue. The larger area shown there is the treatment plant location itself. So we're not going to get revenue from there. So that's where we spend it. So the reason why the state allows you to separate those things or make them co-terminus is if you had a downtown that needed a wastewater treatment plant expansion, you're not really spending money in the downtown, you're spending it at the plant. So you might collect from the expansion in the downtown with an IRD and then spend at the treatment plant in another location with a DD. In this case, the IRD and the DD, the green, pretty much follow what phase one looks like in terms of investments. And a lot of credit goes to Kyle and GIS, Bruce and finding, trying to find and Jeff, every single pumping station to make sure the property, we hit it with the DD or the, where we make the investment. So it is extensive, but what it does, it allows us to collect revenue from that district. And the key to the diff in this case is making sure we're trying to offset some of those system-wide costs. In the first phase, you have the treatment plant and the larger trunk lines. So as a result, you really don't want to pass all of that on to the subsequent phases. You're very fortunate to have the commercial phase as the first phase. So as a result, a diff can collect from that new commercial investment and then cover those costs without trying to pass it on to future phases or pass it on to betterments and user fees. And that's the quick diff explanation.
Are we still doing the quiz after the article?
Quiz, yes, your sheets are right in front of you, it's a blue book.
Okay, good, just checking. Any board members have any questions? Have to have a whole new lexicon.
Yes, that will remove city.
Yeah. Selectman Smith, do you have any?
No questions.
Okay. This is going to be a challenging one, there's a lot of complexity to this, so I, you're gonna have to.
We just recommend that we don't use the, we use the words.
Yes.
The diffs and the C diffs and the.
DD, yeah.
And the DD.
Invested revenue district.
Yes, I think that we need to use the full terminology, please.
And you need more clarity on that pie chart, it's very difficult to read.
Sure.
Anybody else on the board?
Thank you.
Now, did you get that? You ready for the quiz?
Yeah, I'm ready. For clarification for the public, hopefully. The, the area out of which the, a portion of the increased taxes or tax revenue are to be drawn are not necessarily the same district in which they have to be spent, correct? In this case, in this case, they are one in the same, the, the green area.
Correct.
And, and the septic treatment facility is not in the revenue district, right? It's in the district where the money is going to be spent for the design and, and building of the plant. Okay, so, so that's good. The other thing is, this is not limited to wastewater, it's any infrastructure improvements. I mean, we're going to be dedicating these revenues to wastewater because that's the more pressing problem. But under the statute, I think you can use it for just general infrastructure projects, can you not?
Correct, in fact, a lot of communities will use it for downtown streetscapes. So they'll, they'll do their sewer, the water with other funds. And then above that work, above the utilities, they'll do all the streetscape work as a match with the diff.
So this could change further down the road depending on community needs.
Correct.
I, I don't see that happening because of the, you know, the, the projections of this project, there's something like 30 years, so. But in theory at least, the dedication of the funds could change in terms of how they're spent, correct?
Well, you, you apply it to a note that pays for a project, so it's not excluded from being spent on those funds. So you wouldn't target per se streetscape with this money. You would target the note and then the note would include the project, which would include streetscape. If that's what you want to do. I mean, you've got to, once you're finished with the sewer project, you've got to do the finish coat and sidewalks and other things that you might want to do, at least as sort of part of a DOT project. But this would sort of go to pay the note. And you have several ways to do that, which is in the second town meeting in 2023, you can either have a flatline percentage, but you get a lot of revenue with the N, or you adjust a percentage where it's higher in the beginning when your revenue isn't all there and just stabilize it as you go through to just target a certain amount for debt. The advantage of a diff is you can also pull out cash for soft cost projects of design and things like that. But that's all part of the next phase of this approval, which is actually writing the diff program, how it's spent, where it's spent, and that happens at next town meeting.
And, and the last point, so people know, we're not talking about any new taxes here. We're just talking about really an allocation of, of, of the growth in the tax base that occurs as a result of these infrastructure improvements.
Correct, and, and so, and, and in fact, as I said earlier, you're not taking away from the base. So you're going to get the taxes that you get now for the base values you get now. You're going to get the taxes associated with market value increases. This basically says if you add a, something to commercial, you will pick up that new growth and you assign a percentage of that to your cost.
Okay, thank you.
Selectman Post.
Question about the way this is worded though. And I'm, it started to make me think about it because we had a TIF area before that expired. And it was related to the state legislature, which was a tax increment financing district. And 40Q, do you know how long?
30 years.
So it's 30 years, but based on, based on the way that this article is worded and it says phase one invested. So, so does that mean this is over and we revote after this phase one is complete?
No, your phase one is just phase one, it is where it is on the map and we named it directly after phase one. So.
I think that.
What would happen is after you finish a program and next cycle, it began, the, the cycle begins the 30 years.
I think if someone goes back and reads this to, to try to understand the intent of what we were trying to, to do, it might get a little bit confusing because the point is to leave it in place, right, for the, for the term of.
Correct, so it's left in place for the full 30 years, I can clarify that in another.
I just would make sure that this doesn't, just because it says phase one development reinvestment revenue district, I would, I would hate for somebody in the future to look back and I think we just need to be clear what the intent is.
Sure, and, and I mean, the unfortunate thing is you'll need it for 30 years, but you won't see a lot of strong revenue in your first three or four, only because growth won't be happening right away.
Were you, were you planning on a handout for this, something that?
I can do that.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have a handout that provides a way to, for, for example, you don't want to rely on the screen to show the map and the outline of the district, right? I think there should be a handout that has at least some of the basics, maybe the FAQs in a map. Because otherwise what you're doing is, is you're relying, you're putting it all on your shoulders in the slides to do it. And I would at least, let's anticipate that folks are going to want some additional supplementary information on it and have something that at least has the map on it, answers to frequently asked questions. I think, as was mentioned before by Tracy and others, the, the more that you can spell things out in, in the stuff that's presented and in the supplemental stuff, I think the more helpful that will be. But this is going to be one that will generate some queries and I think we should just anticipate it. Think about what some of those questions are and just give people that information ahead of time.
We were, we were looking at putting the sort of different funding sources in a row and showing the diff as a flexible funding source that allows you to go up to overs, offset the betterment.
Yeah, I think if you can do something that is just diff 101.
Alright.
Before you go to diff 102 and 103 and one, you know, just something that covers the basics of this and helps people really understand the basic concept behind it, that will be incredibly helpful. We've done this before, the other thing is that we, we've already done a diff, right? At a prior town meeting, we took steps to create a diff.
Yeah, I mean, I think that.
So first question someone could ask is, is well, how is this different from the other diff? Now we have two diffs, are we having two diffs?
No, we only have one.
All right, but the point I'm getting at is, is we need to acknowledge to people that we've done this before, that this is an improved diff, a, a new one, we did this once, but this is a new and improved one, all right?
The key to this one and a lot of credit goes to GIS and assessing is getting that parcel list. The parcel list in the back of the report is the definitive evidence of the extent of the diff. The map is fine, but you know, no matter how big you make it, it's going to be difficult.
You're going to have people come to the meeting, don't be surprised and say, am I in the diff or out? Why wasn't I notified?
Yeah, you might want to do an easel board.
Right?
A big one.
So you should, like, I, I'm not suggesting you have the list of all the properties affected, but you should at least have something at your disposal that you can hand out.
In, in the past, we, when I've done this, I've, if it, if an entire street is encompassed, I've listed the street or the address is on the street and so.
That is important.
I, I know Santa, I mean, that's why ostensibly I've been going door to door, went to the CDC, went through with them, went to the chamber, I'll be going to Rack, explain it to them. Fincom, we, I have a presentation, so. We're going to various venues to make sure that some of those venues are standing up and saying, you know, this is going to work.
No, I understand, I'm just anticipating that this is going to generate a fair number of questions and I'm just trying to provide some help in terms of how to address them. Is there anybody else that wants to be, speak to this on the board? Select, no, okay. Okay, we, I think we can.
We're gonna go, we're gonna go to diff con two. Our next article is article 22, which is, creates the town seal committee to review the imagery of the current town seal. And I know there's been a great deal of discussion on that, we're looking forward to the town meeting input on it. I don't know, there's too much more we can say on that one.
No, I'm assuming that the historical commission will speak to the, this, when it comes to the floor, right? This is, this is their article, they'll be able to speak to it. And I think what we're doing is we're putting the decisions in, at the town meeting level. This is a governing body discussion and a governing body decision. And I think that's a fair way to handle it. Is there anybody else? Did you have a comment? Selectman Smith?
The, the Native Americans living in Barnstable County have commented on various town seals in various towns. And excuse me for a minute, they've also commented on the state of Massachusetts flag, which says, we're going to come in peace, but if not, we're going to chop your damn head off. And that is also being discussed at the state level.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, we can move on to article 23.
We get into the community preservation and I thought maybe Karen could help us walk through some of these items. She's worked quite hard with committees to get everything squared away.
So this is the first article, article 23. This is what we've always called the housekeeping article. It takes the anticipated revenues that come in and it allocates it across the three reserves, the community housing reserve, historic preservation, open space. We also allocate some funding for operating expenses. I know that there was questions before on the, the requirement here, excuse me, is that it's a minimum of 10% be allocated to each of the three buckets. And it's obvious the community housing reserve is different from the rest. And the reason there was that the community preservation committee saw fit to increase that amount to offset costs associated with staff administration of the affordable housing program. So this reserve has historically been used to fund the affordable housing trust request, which is the next article. And they just upped the amount to put it in line with the actual costs.
Any comment, question for Karen on this one?
If I could, Karen, how were the administrative costs?
If I could, Karen, how were the administrative costs allocated prior to this?
They, they came out of the reserve, Dan. And sometimes, you know, so I say historically, they've gone to the Housing Reserve to fund the Affordable Housing Trust. It's not always been the case. Sometimes it would come out of the undesignated reserve, which is the balance here. But, you know, we could have done it one, one or the other ways. And this was just the, the way we did it this year. Unfortunately, it may beg question. So we're trying to finesse that answer.
Are there any of those types of support costs in the other categories?
There are not.
Okay.
There are not.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the, the next article, Article 24.
Okay, this is the Affordable Housing Trust article, which is funded. This funds housing efforts for people at or below 80% of the area median level, which just for folks' information at home, for a household of one, that's about $54,000. For a household of two, it goes up to $62,000, three is 70. And for a household of four, to be income eligible for this program, you would need to have an income at or below $77,000. So the, the funding here, the $240,000 in addition to staffing costs includes, you know, roughly $170,000 budgeted for new units and $15,000 for preservation or repair of existing affordable housing units.
The, the repair program for affordable housing units, how popular is that?
It's, it's it's not hugely popular because I think that what we grapple with is the cost of repairs and whether or not we, we try to get a house onto the subsidized housing inventory. So sometimes the repair costs are very short or will target the whole amount at, you know, kind of one property for a roof or something like that. We also couple, you know, we try to take the various funding sources that we have on hand and, and target them. And so we generally use our CDBG program for
That's the bucket of money that you use to underwrite that. So you're able to perhaps do more?
Yes.
For, for improvements?
Than $15,000 a year. Yes.
So with respect to the program or the need for those funds overall, regardless of the CPA source, I would assume the interest is high.
Interest is high. It's, you know, we're, we're funding housing repairs for income eligible folks. And so there's, there's kind of a misalignment in terms of homeownership and income eligibility.
If I could wave my magic wand and write you a blank check for rehab, what would, what would we put in for the number?
Oh, man.
Because my argument is, my guess is that one of the things that the federal and state housing programs shortchange Cape Cod on is housing rehabilitation assistance. I've been involved in creating a housing rehab program in a community. And once we opened it up, I mean, people came out of the woodwork.
So do we get this amount every year or is it a one-time deal?
No, it would be every year. Every year you'd get a chunk of money. Think about that because there is, there is a need, a growing need to do more housing rehab. And it's directly related to affordability because there's some folks that have real needs with their homes, but they just don't have the money to do them. And then they have, they're almost forced out.
At one point, we did do, and the state was more receptive in terms of putting the units onto the subsidized housing inventory. We did do repairs to septic systems, and that was a very popular program. It's something, I don't know if Bill, I saw Bill had his hand up. I don't know if he
The county is moving aggressively. One of the things that I've been pushing for is expanding the Septic System Loan Fund to capitalize it at a much larger level so that we can provide more of that kind of help.
And for wastewater costs for folks.
Oh, no question. Yeah, it would be for, it, it would be for the, the funds. We're, we're talking about a significant increase in the capitalization of the fund. And it would be used to cover hookup costs and upgrades to septic systems. So that's being discussed and laid out at the county level. So stay tuned on that.
We'll work on a number for you.
That would be great. No, because I do think that there may be opportunities funding wise to go after some dough. The problem has been administering a program like that, but it seems like you folks have figured that out, or maybe you haven't.
Yeah, we could talk more.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anything else on?
Just for about 25 units, it'd be about $400,000 for a housing rehab program, including the housing inspector and staff. That's a 30,000 a year. That's a DHCD sort of numbers.
And DHCD likes housing rehab programs. HUD likes housing rehab programs. The problem is they don't provide us enough money to do them and do them well. Typically, you get shortchanged and ultimately, here on the Cape, most of the towns tend to shy away from the programs because there's just not enough money.
I mean, the, the housing stock here wouldn't be as problematic as in places with a lot of older stuff where the foundations are falling apart.
Go to Wellfleet, go to Churro, go to Province Town. All right, we have a lot of, we have a lot of folks in low income living in properties that
No, I, I understand that. I'm not talking about the demographics. I'm talking about the age of the housing stock that other places you'd run into a building and look at 30,000 and come out and have to spend 60.
I understand.
Unfortunately, the costs for some of these people that are living on a fixed income, it's not even, it doesn't even have to be that old for their roof to be in disrepair. Can't afford to replace it, and the damage that it causes is just
There's a lot of furnace work that you would do, window replacement, things like that. You can, energy efficiency.
Yeah, you know, I, I don't want to go off, way off tangent here, but when I, when I knocked on doors in 2017 in Yarmouth, I was floored by the number of older people, low income people, living in properties that need help. The numbers are just overwhelming. I bet you if we sat down and surveyed our council and aging director, our police chief, police officers, if we surveyed the fire department, fire personnel. I mean, we've got EMTs going into all sorts of situations. And just in my anecdotal conversations with EMTs, police officers and folks in, in the senior center, the need is huge. We just haven't quantified it. We haven't gotten our arms around it. But just going door to door and talking to people, there's a real problem out there.
I think you, being on the board for housing assistance can probably help because I remember the day that we spent doing the big fix. Those, there was a huge list of properties that we went and did a lot of work at. And, you know, and it's money well spent when you talk about 30, $30,000 a unit. When you're, when we're looking at our affordable housing now in terms of what the buy down is to get it to an affordable rate, the money that you're spending to, for one unit is
Huge.
is astronomical. And this 30,000 is actually the, it could keep them from being homeless. So
Totally agree.
It's a huge quality of life.
Totally agree. It would be, I, I do think there's a benefit if there's a way we can quantify or at least come up with an argument and a number that can be justified. Because I, I do believe with the money that's been appropriated this year and some of the monies, that there may be opportunities to get some additional relief and assistance. I, I think it's worth at least exploring. So I'm, I'm glad there are others that feel the same way about the importance of it. Anything else on Article 24? Affordable Housing 25.
So Article 25 is comprised of two items. These are both historic preservation articles. The first is through the Friends of Ancient Cemetery, working in collaboration with the Yarmouth DPW through the Cemetery Division. So this is an ongoing program that will help to preserve and protect grave markers at Ancient Cemetery up in Yarmouth Port. It's $17,685. This includes, you heard a few weeks ago from Christine Greeley, who was quite passionate. And the people working on this with Laurel Gable and Melanie Barron, as well as all the volunteers, they're extremely passionate about this, and this has been a really
They've expressed
quite a model program. Yeah. So this, this funding will help to repair some of the really bad stones that are in need of conservation. And it will also fund the materials and supplies that the volunteers need to keep on with their cleaning efforts, as well as additional documentation, digitization, that type of record keeping that is really popular with folks working on their genealogy. The other item here is through the Yarmouth Historical Commission. We'll have to fix the slide. I think it's fixed in the warrant. This is to fund at $73,000 the village water pump up in Yarmouth Port on the bend on Summer Street. It's fallen quite into disrepair. It was donated to the town way back in, I think, the 1800s. And the funding here will do a conditions and assessment first look to find out exactly how do we need to go about preserving this really beautiful cultural resource? And then we have, so we have estimates, we've used those estimates to build the cost of the actual restoration work for the
So I assume this will have to be coordinated with all that road work and utility work as well, right? Another item in your coordination matrix there, Mr. Colby?
This one's on the side of the road.
Very good. Selectman Smith, did you have a observation?
I do, I do have a comment. On the, on the cemetery, one of the key things to recall, it's volunteers, volunteers, volunteers. They don't get paid. They're just getting materials.
Good point. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, excellent. And number 26.
Okay, number 26. This is the last CPA article for this upcoming annual town meeting. This is an open space and recreation project. It's further funding for the Friends of Bass River, Upper Bass River Watershed Preservation Efforts. As we know, they've been doing some really good work. They're working hard to secure other funding from other places. This is such a big, important job. This component, this $102,500 will help to fund engineering design and permitting. There's quite a bit of permitting associated with this project. I was just looking through the application and the list is long. This is Mass Historic Commission, MEPA, DEP, Chapter 91, Army Corps of Engineers, and our own local conservation commission.
Yeah, and just for full disclosure, I'm helping them get a significant amount of federal money for the project. So FYI, anybody on the board comments on this or questions?
A lot of this property, but it's town-owned property up there already, which is roughly 55 acres. So it's, it's an improvement for both the recreation area that the town owns and also to improve the water flow in Bass River, which is going to help, help us all. And also at one time, the herring run that was right up there was the largest in Massachusetts.
Someone, I think, who
Mr. Riker, A. Riker.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed on the Zoom channel, we have someone who's expressed interest. What I, what, what I would like to do is just suggest that you put something in the chat that staff can look at so we can understand why you're interested in being recognized. Generally, the, there's not a public portion right now. So hopefully someone can go in the back room, maybe Bill, and check. Unless we can get into the chat from here, it would be nice if they could just, we could communicate with them and try to get some ideas as to what it is they'd like to be recognized for. All right.
I probably can on, on there, I can let you know. But you might want to let him know to activate chat on the bottom of the screen because you might not know how to activate it.
You can have a side discussion. We're, we're going to resume our meeting. Thank you. Is there anything else, Karen, that you would like to add to this?
There's not. These are all really great projects supported by local volunteer groups who are
And I think everybody on the board also appreciates the hard work of the, the Community Preservation Committee. They really do an incredible job.
People at home, the Friends of Bass River has some great social media as well. They have videos of what they're trying to accomplish. So if anybody's interested in looking at what they're working on.
That's great.
The Friends of Bass River.
The next article is Article 27 on zoning, short-term rentals.
Kathy Williams, our town planner, has done a great job. We've been talking about these last couple of meetings.
Another late night for Kathy.
Just saw you last week.
I know, I know. But I think one of the things that we're trying to do as a board, just to let everybody know, is really spend, you know, extra time on some of these articles and go over, going over the warrant. Because we're not going to have really much discussion between now and town meetings. So I, we very much appreciate you and the other department heads staying here tonight to offer some additional commentary on just the importance of all of these articles. So why don't you talk to us about the importance of Article 27?
Very briefly, what we really need to do is address the ambiguity of short-term rentals in our zoning bylaw to retain the short-term rental tax revenue that's so important to our wastewater revenues, as well as putting the money into the bucket of Article 18, while outlining some general provisions that'll help retain the character of our neighborhoods, such as limiting where people can park, identifying the type of rentals that you can have, limiting it really to residential uses and no large events. But because we kind of developed this in a rather expedited fashion, and we want to be sure that we're not risking losing that short-term rental revenue, we do have a sunset clause in here. So hopefully that'll make people feel a little bit more comfortable voting for it annual town meeting, knowing that we have a little bit more time for a more detailed planning process. And the planning board is planning on having a fall summit to talk about how everything went over the summer and see what amendments or changes might be necessary.
That's great. Do any board members have any questions or comments on this particular article? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I, I, again, a ton of work that was done in a relatively short period of time. And, and I think that, I think the key thing is, is just your first, first bullet point under 14, 1418.1, which is protect and maintain the residential character of the existing neighborhoods. Extremely important. And, and I know in, in some cities, you know, I, I give you the North End in Boston, which a lot of the character was changed because this was not well thought out on, on their end. No other comments, except thank you for, for doing all of this.
Anybody else on the board? Have any comments? Selectman Stone, anything you want to chime in on? No? Selectman Post? That's great. Well, that was easy. Article 28.
This is an article that the planning board worked with the Chamber of Commerce and the Police and the Building Departments to help expand opportunities for temporary seasonal housing. Right now, we have an existing zoning bylaw that allows up to 15% of hotel and motel rooms to be used for seasonal employees of the motel owners. What this article does is it expands the pool of temporary employees to people who are other Yarmouth businesses. So if you're an employee of a Yarmouth business, you could have the opportunity to have a space in one of these 15% of the hotel motel rooms. Relatively simple change that hopefully will add some additional rooms and opportunities for seasonal housing in Yarmouth.
Anybody would like to comment on this? Anybody on the board? I mean, the reality is, is that we do have a problem in Yarmouth with providing affordable housing, any housing for our seasonal workforce.
Sorry, I was just trying to see the chat.
The You might have to mute that.
I thought I'd be able to see what they're saying.
Yeah, clearly the need has been well documented. It's well understood. And this will go some way towards helping solve the problem. It's not going to be a silver bullet, but it at least provides some additional relief, additional opportunities. Is it safe to assume that this is going to be monitored and evaluated at the
Yes, correct. This will also be part of that fall summit with the planning board. There are a lot of checks and balances that are already in place. You need to have an annual permit from the Building Department. You need to have an onsite proctor. So there's a lot of things that are already built into, to protect the neighborhoods as well.
An onsite proctor is one of the requirements.
Yes, it is currently and continues with the expansion.
Good. Anybody else? No? Very good. Let's move on to the, to the next one. Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks for staying.
Thanks for hanging in there, definitely. On the polystyrene, is there anybody that wants to speak further to this? Does there, are there any board members that are interested in talking about this any further? I mean, basically, it's a, it's a petitioned article, and it's on the use and the disposal of polystyrene products. And Robie, I know you're very familiar with this. You know the details. For the folks that are watching at home, it'd be great if you could just come up and just give a really quick just give a really quick overview of what we're, what this petitioned article is trying to accomplish.
Sure, sure. My name is Robie Whitehouse. I'm the Assistant DBW Director. I'm the representative for the recycling committee and they are the petitioners for this particular article. Their concern is primarily the health of the people who are using or taking home these polystyrene containers with food that is hot. When the food is hot and it hits the polystyrene, it can cause some health risks. Their other concern is related to the disposal of polystyrene. There is no recycling stream in the town of Yarmouth for polystyrene, so it must go into our municipal solid waste. So it's an increase in the waste. And we have many restaurants here in town that have already found solutions other than polystyrene, and they are already being very proactive about it. And there are comments that it is costly. There are some alternatives provided that are less costly to replace the polystyrene. And the recycling committee has been very active in talking to the local restaurants.
That's great. Now, a lot of these, several petitioned articles like this are part of a movement or a group of sort of a team effort to, around the Cape. Is this a petitioned article that has also been submitted to other towns? Have other towns taken this up to your knowledge?
There have been other towns that have done this, yes, along the same lines as the plastic bottle ban. Yarmouth resident, the recycle committee was actually a bit against the polys, the plastic bottle ban in their concern was that there was no infrastructure in place in Yarmouth to fill water bottles. And we are actively working on that. But, so that's why our recycle committee was rather against that plan. So when we talk about the other petitioners who are going to other towns and making these requests that, that, this committee is very active and coordinated and conscious about the Yarmouth needs.
I, I understand. But I think an interesting question could come up that might be, what other towns are doing this? And they might want to be prepared to answer that question should it come up.
They will be prepared to answer.
That's great. Anybody else on the board want to comment or question on this? Okay, that's great. Thank you for helping us out.
Thank you, Robie.
All right. Now that brings us to the end of the warrant.
Yeah.
So is there anything else we need to discuss or should discuss regarding the warrant before we move on to the next agenda item?
Did you want to do Article 30?
We'll just note that Article 30 is in there. It's a petition article for a zoning amendment that was made by a property owner for, on behalf of 17 Berry Avenue, West Yarmouth. And so that'll be coming up. The cleaning board and the Board of Selectmen have recommended against it.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else you want to add to this or anybody else?
Just don't want to miss it.
No, no, I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the, the next item on the agenda. And for the department heads that have been here tonight, thank you for hanging out with us and providing your insights and observations. We very much appreciate it.
And thanks for all your work, everyone.
Yeah. Thank you very, very much.
Sorry.
And the next, the next item is the update on the fire chief recruitment and possible action to designate an acting chief.
Of course, Sarah's been here all night. So come on up to the table at least to get some recognition.
Seven o'clock item.
Yeah, I was going to mention that, but I figured I might just hold off.
My bedtime.
We had discussed this item with, with the board and the board had requested.
We bring it back up.
As to the timeframe because it impacts, you know, the chief has announced that his last day is May 6th and we're going to miss him tremendously. But as you can see with the timeframe, the big sync is that we immediately jumped on the assessment center process. But the earliest that we can get the team down to actually do the assessment center is July 28th. The other items, maybe you could tell us a little bit in terms of the positions been posted and.
Hey, guys, I'm going to ask if you could just take that out into the hall? Thank you. Okay, sorry. Please, please continue, Robert.
Yeah, Sarah was just going to outline the, the steps, the posting and everything and.
So the position has been posted as of March 23rd. The plan is that as of April 13th, the resumes will be forwarded to MRI. They're our assessment center. The week of April 25th, there'll be an orientation with the candidates, kind of outlining the next steps in the process that will take place over Zoom. And then finally, the assessment will take place in Yarmouth on July 28th.
So where does the internal process, where is that in here in terms of?
We do the assessment center and, and, you know, depending, you know, we assume that that we're going to have, everyone's going to go through.
Every candidate.
Correct.
Regardless of their qualifications.
Well, if we have a small enough amount, if, if there's too many for the assessment center, then we may have to narrow it down first. But we hope to have them all go through.
I didn't know that. I thought there was a process before we went through that to review them.
And the, the key issue is that we want the Board of Selectmen, you know, start thinking in terms of if we stick to our original process that, you know, we're going to have to ask the board to appoint an acting chief for after May 6th, that timeframe.
You said May 6th?
May 6th.
Selectman Stone, did you want to?
I think the chief had recommended that we appoint John Sawyer as an interim. Is that correct, chief? Is that still your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Would it be appropriate to have him come up and give us a brief report as to why that's his recommendation?
I think that would be totally in order.
Good evening, chief. Thank you for coming up.
Good evening. Thank you again for having us. Yeah, I, I feel very strongly that John will be a great chief of this, of this department. He's been right at my side since I became chief. We both acted in the positions for approximately two years going through the process. He was acting deputy. I was acting chief until I finally made the, the permanent position. Been a great partner, done a tremendous amount of work. He's the operations chief, which is a huge role at the fire department. And he's done an exceptional job at it and his evaluations have illustrated that, that and his grant writing's been phenomenal. He's gotten the fire department in this town well over millions of dollars in grand funding, which has assisted us in our, in our capital purchases and personnel as well. He's a great incident commander as well when he has to perform at emergency scenes, level headed. Just a real strong partner for me, which has been great. The success of our department, you have to have a great number two guy. So when I'm away on vacation or whatever, he can step right up and, and do the job. So I feel very confident that he will do a great job for you.
Do you have any questions? Any other questions or comments for, for the chief?
Yeah. Could you give us an example of command situations that he's been in, in your absence and how that's worked out?
You know, there's, there's been structure fires. There's been large area searches. We just had one up here at the drive in. Unfortunately, a gentleman with dementia had walked away and at some point, and we found him in the marsh several hours later, unfortunately. But he ran that whole scene with the police in a multi-agency coordinated effort, which was absolutely fantastic. Worked very well with natural resources, state police, the Barnstable County Tech Rescue Team, the state, state police helicopter was involved as well. And Yarmouth Police and Yarmouth Fire in a unified command post did a phenomenal job. I wish we had a better outcome, obviously, but it was a very well coordinated thing. And that's just one example. There are several.
How is he regarded, in your opinion, by his subordinates?
In my opinion, I think, I think well, he has the respect of the, of the men. He's firm when he needs to be. He's frugal like me when he needs to be, which is, you know, what we have to do in these positions. Yeah, that's, he's, he's done well.
Any other questions, board members for the chief?
I think my only other question, I, we talked about this many months ago. I mean, really, do you see anybody else within the department have the capacity to be able to perform as acting chief at this time?
So currently, there are two members of the department that have the chief officer certification like I do, and that's Deputy Chief Sawyer and Captain Smith. Both of those will, will be applying for this position if they haven't done so already. I believe they have. And Scott's a recent captain. He just got promoted up to captain from lieutenant, but he has the necessary credentials. He's tested in other departments for deputy chief and, and was a finalist in a few places. So he's, he's also an upcoming potential for, for the future of this department. But I think right now, I think John has the experience as in the command position as deputy chief. And I, in my opinion, he would be a stronger candidate at this time.
Any other comments or questions? Selectman Horgan, do you?
I don't have any questions. You know, we were obviously hopeful that we could do this all within a timeframe that we didn't necessarily need to name a deputy or acting chief. Because of the clear advantage it gives, or the perception of advantage it gives to the person that's named the acting chief, I was hopeful that we could avoid that situation because I, I want this to be a transparent process and a fair process. The timing was such so that it doesn't work out. And I appreciate your recommendation. I, I certainly know the character of Deputy Chief Sawyer and completely comfortable with him taking over as acting chief. And I just, whether it's Captain Smith or anybody else, I just want to show them that this will still be a fair process. And this is a step we have to take, but that it should be in no way viewed as our imprimatur for later decision on who gets the final chief's position.
Thank you. Does the administrator have any comment or recommendation on, on this matter?
I concur completely with Chief Simoni and, and I think at this point, you know, it's, it's a luxury to have a deputy chief that is so highly skilled. And I think that under any circumstances, that he would be the appropriate interim in the absence of the chief. So I think he's prepared to do that role.
Appreciate that.
I'd like to make the motion.
Go right ahead.
That we appoint Deputy John Sawyer's acting chief official on Chief Simonian's retirement, which is, which would be Friday, May 6th. So I'm not sure how we word that, but perhaps.
12:01 on May 7th.
01 effective 12:01, May 7th until such time as a permit chief is appointed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It carries unanimously. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Boyd. Thank you very much.
And congratulations, Deputy Chief. And again, congratulations on all the success with your grants and all your other hard work. Very much appreciated.
We'll get to see you again. Do we have a spot for him before he goes?
Oh, we will make sure we have a spot for him before he goes.
All right.
He's not going to leave unscathed.
I'll be at town meeting as well on the, on the 26th. And I hope all of you can join us at Station 3 on the 6th. That would be great.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is, is board and committee actions, upcoming agenda review.
And as you can see, we've got a couple of busy meetings coming up. Town meeting is April 26th, April 12th. We've got the shellfish, second golf hearing, and then there's a show cause hearing regarding that El Mariachi restaurant.
Now, on, just, just so that we don't lose track of this, for the town meeting, we typically, as a board, will meet right before the town meeting. And I just want to put out there, is there a need? Do we need to meet?
Yes, we will be unless we take action. We have something that's from the floor.
There you go. So we should have that posted. So that should be noted on the April 26th. So if the town meeting is at 6, then we'll be meeting as a board at 5:00 PM.
5:00 PM.
Yes.
Okay, 5.
We had, unless there's, unless you're going to take a position in polystyrene, I think that it was said from the floor. And then we, I think we typically have always had a meeting posted just in case.
Yeah.
Even if we adjourn.
Well, that's why I wanted to bring it up because I, I didn't see it here. I figured, you know, we probably should have something, but I wanted to hear what everybody.
We may only need a half hour, but.
I think you're right. Maybe, well, we should probably, if that's all we have, we should probably notice it for 5:30 unless we have other items that come up between now and then.
I'm comfortable with noticing it for 5:30 unless the administrator, we can wait to the last minute and post it if the administrator advises that there may be some.
It's a lot of power.
I don't have a problem with moving it to 5, but I think.
But if, if that's all there is, it's not going to take us more than five or 10 minutes.
No.
15 at the most.
I, I would agree.
And we're on our seven o'clock item. 15 minutes is really like an hour.
It is, it is. Right. So the time and process just.
Well, I think one of the things.
You know, the universe is expanding from what I understand. So that may have some impact on our.
Some motions that need to be amended. We have to do the whole thing with our books.
Right.
And, and, and make sure we have any subsequent motions.
So you okay with 5:30?
Yeah, either way.
Okay.
I trust him.
Anything that comes up, I'll share as well. We've got.
Thanks.
Which is great. It's, it's nice that it's still only April 5 and we're, I think so well prepared. We've got a little time to get on.
It's been a while, quite frankly, since we've been this prepared going into a town meeting, really.
I thought your session this evening was, was great to be able to get that much detail out to the public, you know, in advance like this. That was a great idea.
No, we, no, I, I'm so used to scrambling at the last minute on so many items. I think it's great that we're able to spend some time and target particular articles and have some extended discussion as we have tonight, but also in, over the past couple of weeks. So anything else on upcoming agenda items?
Could I jump in on that?
Yes, by all means.
The 12th looks pretty busy, but I'm wondering if on the 19th, we can just talk a little bit about the Route 6A situation.
I'll get an update on the Route 6A.
Yeah. And, you know, whether there's quick steps that can be taken and then longer term steps.
Yeah, maybe during individual items tonight, maybe there's a board member that might, would like to update the full board on how things, how they thought things went.
Bob, have you scheduled your meeting with the business, businesses there?
I'm in Communications with Mary Bilbon to get that meeting all together. And we're meeting with our team on this Friday to review short term actions and long term actions.
You're going to do that before meeting with the business folks?
Yes, just to get, get our, our things, you know, together, but.
It would be nice if you heard from them before you made a plan.
Well, we're not, we're not going to finalize a plan, but you know, one of the things, just as an example, that we have to go over and we have to sit and discuss this to go over is the, the detailed comments, which a couple of us took some detailed notes. So I want to make sure that everyone's got all of the information and that we're thinking about it and then that we plan together. I'm not going to just go meet with the businesses. I, I want to have, you know, the people there that are involved in it, to have the chamber there. And so it's more to prepare to meet with the business people. It's not to sidestep them.
Okay, I just hope that before we get our next update, that that has all happened. I think we have to act quickly.
Okay.
Bob, what time are you meeting on Friday?
9:30.
9:30?
Yeah, and, and I'd like to do it right here.
Here. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to try to, try to be there. I'm supposed to be in Provincent, but I can put that off to the afternoon.
Very good. All right. The, the next item is, unless there's anything else for the upcoming agenda. All right, the, the next item is, unless there's anything else for the upcoming agenda review, then let's move on to the individual items. I'm going to start with down Mr. Horgan's end tonight. Are there any individual items you might have for us?
Let's see.
You can come back to you.
We, we talked tonight about the fire chief process right after town meeting. I'd suggest we might want to begin the process for the chief, police chief. Just begin talking about process and where we go with that.
Okay.
I personally just wanted to.
So we would make, we would put that as an agenda item.
So I'm sorry.
So let's, let's add that as an agenda item.
It's on here as well.
Where is it?
On the back.
It's on that kind of.
On the back end?
Possibilities.
Okay, but let's talk for a moment on a date. When would be a good date for us to have that conversation? Any suggestions, Dan or Bob? Do you have any suggestions? When do you think it would be timely to put that on our agenda?
Either May 3 or next meeting in May.
Maybe 3 is pretty busy.
One of the two.
Do you think that you should have that discussion with the new board? I think that discussion might be warranted with a, with the new board. It's, it's something that they're going to be involved in the process.
May 24 then.
Yeah.
May 24. And we can put reorg on the agenda item there too for the 24th.
If I can, back to agenda. I wonder if it wouldn't be a good idea at some point to begin talking about a Matiche reuse commit, committee. When is, I believe the school's going to be done in, what, Novemberish? The new one?
I think, don't we have that on for a, yeah, we have that on as an agenda item. We just haven't pegged the date. We should definitely do that with the new board. And the question would be, what work would need to be done to really prep for that meeting? Would mean getting information on the, the schedule for the abandonment of the buildings, right?
Possible, um, charter.
Charge.
Charge.
Charge of the committee.
Committee. Yeah, I mean, one of the things that, just so that you know, is I, when this first came up, my, my question was, do we have a budget? Do we have, will we have a need or a budget for studies staffing? Because this should be, when we take this up, we should have at least a tentative plan or a suggested plan or recommended plan with options so that we can have a bit of a discussion. I think what would be great about talking about this after town meeting is that it would give chance for folks to get behind town meeting, get it behind us, and then take a fresh look at how best to approach this particular topic. The, the prior administrator wanted to hire a committee or appoint a committee and give them a charge, but at the time, there was no discussion of funding, budget, and the charge was a bit ambitious with almost no resources. So typically, when communities come into the control of a facility like this, there's usually some analysis done, some kind of feasibility study. I've seen that with a lot of other communities. We should at least have a conversation about that. Bill?
Depending upon if you want it to consider private sector, you would issue an RFP, but you need enough detail about the facilities so that developers could respond. So it's, it's, it's an inexpensive way of getting proposals, but you, you need to get past whether or not you want to privatize it or you want it for public uses or a percentage. So the committee would come in and set some policies, and then you would issue an RFP for a portion of the property or whatever.
Yeah.
It, it's, they're not binding. I mean, although people will put work into it, but it gives you an idea of what the potential uses are.
We did an RFQ. We had two different committees in the, in the last, the last one. We did an RFQ first, which was interesting. I think it, that broadened our mind to different thoughts, and we drafted the RFP around some of those proposals.
Yeah. What I don't want to do is use time between now and town meeting to be sorting this out. I'd like to give some sufficient space so that we get through town meeting, and this can be a work item for the administrator's office to sort of, for you folks to sort of sort through what our options are.
The mass development also has some pre-development money that sometimes they spring for projects like this. But sometimes they hire their consultants, so it's a.
I think one of the biggest things right now is not knowing Matiche, I mean, Small.
Small, right.
And I think if, if the, this board decides to go through with the reuse of just Matiche alone, it's going to be falling maybe a little bit short, then we should be looking at the whole parcel and really having a plan for Emmy Small because, you know, it would have been completely different here if we had done that. If we had known what the future was going to hold, we may have had, not that what's there now is, you know, but I'm just saying, you know, it's going to be two different potentials, really. So, and I don't know if we have the information in terms of the expenses and how far Emmy Small that, that, that plan is, but I think you really have to look at it holistically. And if you start to really look at just Matiche, you're missing, you're going to miss.
My concern would be the timing in terms of how long is the school.
Yeah.
Going to wait to, to create a plan for Small.
Well, what I'd like to suggest is, is we've got this on our agenda items. Okay?
It's not, it's.
It's there. What I'd like to do is. No, what I'd like to suggest is that at the conclusion of town meeting, I think we should ask the administrator at an appropriate time within, within, let's say, a month after town meeting, there at least is some initial suggestions and recommendations in terms of how we might want to consider approaching this. I think everything that's been sent tonight is all spot on. It's just a question of, okay, we don't want to, to your point, Tracy, we don't want to be jumping the gun or getting too far ahead of our skis. You know, we want to essentially make sure we're clear of what the timeframe is, what the schedule is, what are some of the other issues that need to be settled first before we dive in. I think there's an opportunity to at least do a little bit of homework and a little bit of planning so that we're at least prepared to have a conversation about it sometime in the near future with the new board. So, is that okay?
Sounds perfect.
Okay.
And because we have nothing else to do, I thought we might also do one other thing, which is, if we could really begin to workshop the streetscape of 28 and really begin to look at that and,
Yeah.
hand out some meetings on that.
Well, I think one of the things that's going to come up that'll be important for that discussion is the work that Bill is doing, that he needs to brief the board on regarding the study and some analysis work on 28, because we need to start looking at, almost visioning and assessing what, 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 what those possibilities are, what's going to happen. So he's going to be presenting to the board. We don't have to do this tonight, but let's set this, make sure that we give adequate attention to it on.
What study are we talking about?
I approached the CDC for funds to do market analysis for 28 to determine appropriate land uses once you have sewer. So you have a lot of tourism and other like uses there because that's the market. Once you have sewer, you may have, open yourself up to uses that are year-round, have some higher values, higher values in employment. So what we want to determine on the corridor, what's the opportunity to diversify the economy? Second to that is, we're looking at working with a consultant on entering the tip possibly for the balance of the work. The DOT is, DOT is going from the Hyannis line to Parker River, to get on the tip from Parker River to the work near the Bass River. So that's a multi-year process, and by the time you're done with sewer, you might be able to, you know, cap it with a project.
So what I wanted to do is to save this as an agenda item for one of our next upcoming meetings. We've got this, we've talked about this for what meeting, possibly, Bill or Bob? Well, we really haven't.
We haven't set a.
We haven't specifically, we haven't set a date for it. We, but we've had the same conversation. How do we get this conversation on the agenda for the board? So you're very clairvoyant there, Selectman Horgan. That's exactly the discussion that we've had. When, do we want to try to peg a, a time tonight? It should be clearly soon. Do we want to put that on the agenda for the 29th, or is that to, excuse me, the 19th? Bill? You want to, my understanding is you want to get going with this work right away.
Well, I, I have to still issue the RFP for a consultant, so I'm, I'm writing the scope right now in line with matching it with the tip.
Okay, so.
Can't the commission help you with that?
The commission?
They actually have. They've done some streetscape work and some analysis already.
This is, this is all tabular. What type of office buildings would you want? What is the fiscal impact of that use and stuff like?
They've helped us on the kinds of things that I think they're capable of helping us out with. This kind of stuff, I don't think they can give us.
In addition, what this does is it determines your potential revenue stream from the new growth. So when you go into town meeting for 2023, you understand what your development program is.
Right. So let's take it up. We'll leave it up to you and, and Bob to recommend a time and a date. But it's got to be soon. We've got a couple of meetings. We got to figure it out. All right, any other agenda items?
Sorry.
No, these are all good things. It, the thing is, is that they're all timely, need to be discussed, and, and sometimes just even talking about when to schedule them invites a longer discussion about what it exactly, what it is. So. Mike Stone, Selectman Stone, do you have?
No, the only thing I was going to mention is, once we find out what we're going to do with the voting for certain, that in addition to all the other outlets of information that were talked about by Mary tonight, maybe what we want to do is, on our own agenda, publish that instead of public comment, maybe restructure it as public comment and announcements, and just keep, between now and the election, just keep announcing that at the beginning of the meeting when people are more apt to be with the meeting than.
No, that's, that's, I think.
Or later. So, so we can just, you know, keep getting that out and, and also have it like in the packet under public announcements with, with the date, so people who access the packet will see that, where that new voting place is going to be.
Right. I think that's an excellent idea. I think the Falmouth Board of Selectmen does that, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Rittenhour, isn't that part of their opening? They make announcements in the very beginning and then go to public comment?
Yes, they do.
So I would like to suggest to the board that we adopt Selectman Stone's suggestion, at least for the, up till the election, and before public comments, adopt public announcements. And what we'll do at the board is we will make announcements. And the one that we should do from, starting with our next meeting through the election, is clearly include that information.
Yeah, or, and also it could be very important meetings that we want to advise the people of.
But I, I would agree. I think public announcements.
But that's a, that's a, that's a critical piece of information, that people know where to go to vote, especially people who
Right.
are so used to going to that particular.
Right, so the, the first item on every agenda will be public announcements, and then we'll go to public comments. I think that's a great idea.
It shouldn't take very long to do the announcements.
No, no.
With the town vote, all those dates.
Yep, yep. So announcements will be, like you said, the election date, some of those locations that people need to be aware of, date of town meeting.
Yarmouth cleanup.
I mean, and we might want to publish those announcements as part of the agenda so that when people go on there to see what's on, they'll see the announcements. So if they decide not to attend the meeting, they'll still have that information.
Another excellent suggestion. You're just a font of outstanding suggestions. Anybody else? Selectman Smith?
Any updates on Bass River Bridge construction?
Would you like to have that as an agenda item? I think it's a great idea. After town meeting?
After town meeting.
Update on Route 28 construction work?
And Memorial Day is coming fast.
Right.
Beach rules and, and, and any, any concession stand trucks or whatever at the beaches.
Right. Now, I did pitch, similar to Mr. Horgan, a very narrow, I, I'll say narrowly focused, an update from Mass DOT on their work on Route 28. Not the Bass River section, but the rest of it. And Bob, have we heard from Mass DOT at all as to whether or not they might be available for something like that soon? Or are we still awaiting to hear from them?
We're still awaiting to get a date so that they can get down here.
So that relates to the other discussion. Even though we may not have a lot to offer, I mean, we've got some information and some work to offer Mass DOT about Route 28 and things that should be done to it. This work that Bill's been talking about actually will provide a much more comprehensive. The challenge is going to be just getting a lot of work done in a relatively short period of time. So there's that out there, the Mass DOT and the other work. So I think that's an excellent idea. We just have to figure out which date to shoehorn it in, but it definitely should be an agenda item. So that's another item immediately after town meeting. Is that what you?
It's just so disappointing, the lack of communication between the state. To, to have that guy walk into a meeting and tell us that is just, it's, shouldn't be allowed. They, they should be communicating with us at every, every step of the way. Why aren't they?
Well.
Because it's a state road.
I know, but it's in our town, so they should be communicating with us.
I don't disagree with what you said, but it's a state road, and I'm, I'm assuming that that's what their, that's what their whole feeling was.
State road. There's no question it's a state road, but they don't communicate any of their plans within our town with us.
Well, maybe we need to have someone show up here periodically from that.
Exactly. That's how it should be. We should have communications with somebody on the state level that, that talks to people. To find out in a public meeting, the way that we did, was, and that's not Mass DOT, that's National Grid, but still, it's, it's ridiculous. It's embarrassing. It's embarrassing that we didn't know that. I'm not saying it's anyone's fault here, but, but there's, there's got to be a better. I can't imagine that other towns have this problem.
They do.
Not every town. They must have.
With the utilities, yeah, they work in their own little world. They, their notice to us comes, goes through the notice to the Mass Department of Public Utilities. We'll get a notice from DPU or some other agency saying.
That hasn't happened? Nobody's gotten anything, and they got that far that he has the plans? How does that happen? That's what I'm saying. He has gotten, he claims that he's ready to do the work. How? And you know what I mean? I mean, it just.
You would think he contacted police departments.
Somebody had to have, for him.
Jeff would be contacted. Yeah, crazy. Yeah, you would think it would be polite, but
I've, I've.
Utilities do what they want to do.
Right.
But the DPU is a state agency that should be representing the communities in this, in this Commonwealth. So why aren't they communicating with us when these applications come? Somebody should be communicating with us.
I don't think anybody here disagrees with you. I think it's just, unfortunately, the reality is, is they don't. We stumble upon these things.
Well, you need to make it happen.
You'll make it. We'll make it happen. Okay, on the list of things to do. All right, any other agenda items, Selectman Stone?
No, no, thank you.
Selectman Post? And Selectman Smith, anything else? All good, all good items. We just have to keep them present and figure out dates. You've got all those, right, Bob?
Yes, there's about 10 items. It's good.
Yeah. No, but what will happen is it should fill up our agenda pretty quickly. Individual items. I'll start at the other end. Selectman Smith, do you have an individual item or two?
No.
Selectman Post? Selectman Stone?
No, thank you.
Selectman Horgan, individual item?
Just sincere condolences to Pam Barnes for the loss of her husband, Steve. Pam's a wonderful employee here in town. Been here for decades. Lost her husband. And, you know, we can't recognize everybody that passes in our town as much as we'd like, but another woman named Mary Manwaring passed away recently, and she was such a dedicated town worker, a town meeting member. She worked for the police department for years. She was a teacher for years. Just a real example of what true citizenship is. She was constantly involved in volunteering her time to make Yarmouth a better place. And it, it's sad to see somebody like that pass. And it it's sad to see somebody like that pass in condolences to her family. And Bob, can you just do a rundown on the 6A meeting before we end?
Yeah.
You know, there's another Steve Barnes point that I learned today. You know, he he built this table you're sitting at.
Steve Barnes built this table?
That's correct.
Wow.
I saw that today.
Anybody else? Selectman Stone? Okay, we've covered everybody. I'd like to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is I had it here a second ago. Here it is.
Consent.
Yeah, the consent agenda. Is there anything there that you would like to point out to us before we take a motion?
There is the approval of the recreational shellfish regulations effective May 1, 2022, and a donation from the Yarmouth Lodge 2270 of the Loyal Order of the Moose in the amount of $2,800 to the Recreation Department. So that's great.
Wow, that's great. Kudos to the Moose.
Can I make a comment on that?
By all means.
The Moose, for years back when I was on the Recreation Commission, many, many years ago, was they identified scholarships for kids at the camp as a charitable target for them. And they've given like tons of money over the years. In some years, when they had really good revenues, I mean, the numbers were substantial. They're like close to $10,000.
Wow.
So they've they've been a loyal supporter of that enterprise. They really have.
That's great, thank you, Mike. So do I have a motion on the?
Consent agenda with thanks. Second.
Okay, a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed carries unanimously. Okay, in addition to that, updates from the town administrator.
Okay, I do have a couple of items. The first one, I wanted to update you a little bit on the town meeting outreach that I, again, I thought this was an excellent session, and the more we can do to get out here on video that folks can watch on the cable, and we'll put it on on YouTube, the better. And in addition to, you know, we're going to be doing press releases to try to get some written press out in the Cape Cod Times. Very difficult these days to get that. And we're also, you know, really pushing the social media. We're going to be using the website. And a real fun one, I think folks are going to like that this week, we're going to be doing a cable television show, not just little tiny snippets, but we're going to be going through some of the critical issues on the warrant. I'm going to have a whole team there. Bill's going to be discussing a little bit on the the diff to some folks that have never seen that. And we're going to have Jeff with us as well and maybe do a half an hour program. It'll be kind of an interview format. So I think that that'll be a, you know, something nice, a little new for folks to see. And the good part about it is we can get it on the public channel, but also get it over on the government channel as well. So we can show that over and over. And I think that'll help stimulate some interest for the town meeting. And thank you for for bringing it up and requesting. We talked a little bit about the public information meeting that we had in Yarmouth Port last Wednesday, March 30. And I know, you know, three of the Selectmen, Dan Horgan, Tracy Post, and Peter Smith, you know, were there for that and gave, you know, their their whole evening. And it was very, very illuminating that these issues you saw i- in the packet, they were last on the Board of Selectmen's agenda in 2019 to make some various improvements out in that area. And then it just looked like the, you know, the issue was sort of dropped. And in the intervening time, of course, conditions, you know, really are worsening with the deterioration of not only the roadway, but the shoulders, the sidewalks, you know, the traffic. And and we really, I I was just astounded by the turnout of folks from the neighborhood that we had so packed that firehouse that the room was was too small. I felt guilty that now we, you know, we can't use that venue anymore because it's not big enough to hold all the people that are interested in this issue. And I thought the departments did a good job. We had a nice team. The police did a nice presentation. Our town planner did a nice presentation. But what we were really there for is to hear from the local residents, and we really got an earful. I I've got, you know, a couple of pages worth of individual comments that I'll be sending out to board members that covered the the gamut from, you know, putting up signage that tells people where you can park, where you can't park, to all sorts of improvements that are needed to make sure we take care of, you know, delivery trucks and ambulances. There's just so much happening in that area. And I I think the frustration that I've heard expressed this evening was, you know, even even worse for the cooperation of the state officials that have just sort of, you know, left this out there hanging on any improvements in that area. It, you know, definitely needs some improvements, even to retain the historic quality out there, which, you know, as far as just the roadway goes, you know, we're losing as it crumbles apart. And, you know, the muddy shoulders, it's it's dangerous to park there. It's dangerous to pull out onto Route 6A, and it's dangerous to walk. And, you know, so there there's a whole series of things that need looking at that we sort of bring into the short immediate term improvements that we can potentially make. And there's a whole series of suggestions that we've had that we're going to be meeting this week with staff to start inventorying those for some potential recommendations. And and also the longer term issues that are going to have to be associated with these construction projects that, you know, we talked about the some in some areas, the sidewalks have been removed, removed by local property owners. The ones that are there are falling apart. You know, it needs physical improvements in not only the roadway, but but the sidewalks, crosswalks, everything. So there's a lot of work that can be done there. And I don't think we have the luxury of dropping it and coming back in two years again. We're going to have to follow this thing, you know, very closely. And the two immediate steps for meetings that we have are we're going to get the team together for an an initial after actions report and sharing of information Friday. And I'm trying to set up a meeting right now. The Chamber, Mary Vilbon, has agreed to coordinate with the local business owners that are located in the village to talk about how we could stimulate better use of the parking areas in the rear of the businesses in in the village and what we need to do to orchestrate some common signage that can be used to help direct people into that area to make it a little safer to use. So those are some immediate suggestions. And it's been fabulous since we've had that session. People's juices have been flowing. We've just had a constant stream of letters, emails, phone calls, following up on different issues, problems, things that we should look at. Recriminations for not having taken action already, but it's all good. People are very, very concerned. And so we're going to have to have a lot of follow up on that and to make sure that, you know, we have adequate funds that are available when we do these construction projects, to make sure the sidewalks get addressed. And and then, you know, to me, the smallest issues are deciding. You know, people are very, very concerned. Oh, is there going to be a curb? Or is there going to not be a curb? And it's kind of a little funny having that discussion when the entire side of the roadway is totally crumbling apart. And then there's a muddy shoulder. And and we're we're, you know, talking about, no, you can't have a curb, or yes, you need one. You know, those are kind of the smaller items. I just think that, you know, some improvements that take advantage of the historic area, you know, things that that we learned. There's the granite curbing, that antique granite curbing from just so many years. I don't know whether it's been 50, 75 years with things being repaved, and they just sink into the ground. I mean, there's curbing that really exists. People saying, oh, you can't have a curb there. But there's been granite curbing there for forever. It just needs to be reset, redone. So it's going to need a lot of work out there. But I was happy to be able to meet so many of the local residents of Yarmouth Port, to hear from them firsthand. It's it's great to see people so enthusiastic about those improvements. And it just shows the sense of place that people really care about the neighborhood. So that's just kind of a a brief update. But we need to make sure this stays on the Selectmen's agenda so that we can review some recommendations and be prepared to take action. And and it's tough for for every person that demands that those parking signs come up immediately. You know, there's another person that says, well, why do we need so many signs in the historic district? So but but to me, there rather than focus on, you know, different things where people, you know, don't have consensus, I thought that there was a tremendous amount of consensus, that there needs to be safety enhancements in that roadway. And and the speed is out of control, and it's just unfettered. And and people aren't stopping in the crosswalk, and you can't walk safely. I mean, those are things that are shared by everyone. And and I I think it's foolishness to, you know, spend so much time on deciding if there's going to be a curb or not when the entire area is unsafe. And so I think if we progress from the safety standpoint and make sure it's convenient to access those businesses in a safe way, that we're going to be on the right track. And and I hope we can, you know, get some action out there.
That's great, thank you, Bob. Is there anything else on your update? Anything else that you need to?
I want to remind board members that we do have on the 12th. No, on. Let's see. What's the the ceremonial bill signing for Nero's Law? It's next Wednesday at 12?
It's next Wednesday.
Yep.
Over at the Gannon Center, so board members are invited to that.
It's April 12 at 1.
Yep.
I I have one one point of interest. And we're talking about outreach to folks and stuff. Canada just passed, and a number of the countries in the in the EU have just passed that places like Meta and Google must carry and pay for local news items. And the key word is "and" to pay for. So, you know, for outreach, for people that are looking at at Facebook and stuff, if there's local news, they have to pay for it. They have to pay the Cape Cod Times, whomever it is is carrying it, and it will be in the in in there. And it just passed in Canada. I don't know all the details of it. And I know a few countries in the EU have also passed the same laws.
Yeah.
And so it might be something that, you know, we might want to, you know,